Go ahead.
Is it power?
I'm so sorry, please forgive me. I'll start over. The council chambers will be open to the public. This meeting will also be available for public viewing and participation through Zoom. Members of the public may also observe the live stream meeting on the city's website at Members of the public may comment on agenda items at the meetings or remotely through an electronic meeting via phone by dialing 669-900-6833. Comments will also be accepted via email at citycouncil@modera.gov or by mail at 205 West Fourth Street, Madera, California, 93637. The city will observe the Madera County Public Health Department's physical distancing recommendation. This may limit seating in the council chambers. However, the city will have seating available in the foyer. All persons visiting city facilities shall observe health and safety protocol. City Clerk? May we have a roll, please?
Mayor Garcia is absent. Mayor Pro Tem Evans?
Here.
Councilmember Gallegos?
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Here.
Councilmember Montes?
Here.
Councilmember Mejia?
Here.
And Councilmember Vegas?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, there will be a slight change in the agenda. I would like to ask Elder Stanley Mackey of 3M Music Ministries to come and give an invocation, please. I would like to ask everyone to please stand at this time.
Thank you. I'd like to give a special shout out to Santa Claus. Always knew he was Hispanic. Let us bow our heads. Father in heaven, everything in the heavens and the earth is yours. This is your kingdom, and we adore you as being in control of everything. Riches and honor comes from you and you alone, and you are ruler of all mankind. Your hand, oh God, controls power and might, and it is at your discretion that men are made great and given strength. So, Lord, we invite you, we invoke your presence to be with us this evening in our decision-making, or we ask that you would lead us and guide us, because we are all desiring most of the same things, Lord, that we be at peace with our fellow man, that our families be safe and happy, Father. Lord, and we will give you all the praise, honor, and the glory. In the mighty name of Jesus, we pray, and for his sake, amen.
Amen. Would you please remain standing? Most women?
Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God.
I'd like to ask for the approval of the agenda, please. Is there motion?
The Pro Tem moved to approve agendas presented.
Second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Public comment, the first 15 minutes of a meeting are reserved for members of the public to address the council on items which are within the subject matter jurisdiction of a council. Speakers shall be limited to three minutes. Speakers will be asked, but not required, to identify themselves and state the subject of their comments. If the subject is an item on the agenda, the mayor has the option of asking, the speaker can hold the comment until the end of, until the item is called. Comments on items listed on public hearing on the agenda should be held until the hearing is open. The council is prohibited by law from taking any action on matters discussed that are not on the agenda, and not adverse conclusions should be drawn if the council does not respond to the comment at this time. Are there any written communications?
We have no written communications for public comment. It does look like we have one caller on Zoom. Caller?
Would you unmute yourself, please?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, please go on.
Okay. I am a concerned citizen of Madera. I called in several weeks ago regarding Mayor Garcia's behavior at the Board of Supervisors meeting that he attended. I have been speaking with several other Madera residents about what should be done to address this mayor's rhetoric in trying to divide the citizens, as well as him messaging other council members during meetings and telling them how to vote. It's also no secret that he has been working behind the scenes with cannabis companies that wish to come to Madera, and he's trying to structure the ordinance in the interest of them instead of the Madera citizens. After having several discussions, we feel it has been the best interest of Madera that the mayor's term be reduced to two years, and we would appreciate it if some council members made comments on this matter tonight. Now, I know you can't directly respond to me, but you can speak to this issue in your comments at the end of the meeting. Us residents feel as if we're not being heard. As a reminder, you work for us, the citizens of Madera who put you in those seats. We are doing our part, we're calling in, we're writing in, we're watching the meetings, but we're not being heard. And let me make myself very clear. If each of you continue to not comment and make motions regarding our concerns, consider yourselves on notice when your term comes up, because we're tired of it. The First Amendment only works when we're being listened to. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else?
I have no written public comment. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to make public comment?
No one at this time? Thank you very much. At this time, we have a presentation from Sarah Boss.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Pleasure to be with you this evening with a COVID update. Our average daily case rate is at 18.8. That's up by 37% from last week, and our positivity rate is at 5.5%. Testing remains steady at around 450 tests per 100,000. That's about 750 tests per day. And hospitalization has decreased slightly, but that's really representative of the lag that happens in hospitalization. Our case rates had come down slightly, so the hospital rates are now down. As our case rates go up, we will expect hospitalizations to follow with a two to three week lag. We are seeing increased case rates across California. Our increase at 37% is slightly lower than the increase we're seeing in other areas, but again, that's pretty predictable, as we see oftentimes case rates increase in other parts of the state first, and then the Central Valley follows. In response to this, the state has put in places, I'm sure many of you know, a short-term temporary masking order that started today and runs through January 15th. The new guidance requires masks to be worn in all indoor settings, irregardless of vaccination status. And the reason and the purpose for this is knowing that we are having increased case rates, that our hospital system has been taxed for a significant period of time, and there's burnout that they've been experiencing. They are, hospitals are being able to maintain right now with only emergency resources still in place, that we want to slow the spread of COVID, to really slow the impact to our hospital system with potential surge in the winter, and also considering flu season as well as other illnesses that are heightened during the winter months. We know that it's, there are differences between obviously transmission among unvaccinated versus vaccinated individuals. Unvaccinated individuals are more likely to transmit the virus, but the universal mandate is really because we know that unvaccinated individuals are far more likely to wear a mask if everyone is masking. The vaccination rate in Madera County is at 51.4%, still lower than the rest of the state, and Omicron is something that's on stage right now, and a lot of people are talking about it. It appears to be very similar to Delta with regards to transmissibility and infection outcomes, but we're still learning about Omicron, and we don't have a full picture yet of the impact and specific data about how it affects individuals who are vaccinated. There are early signs that with a booster, vaccinated individuals will have protection from Omicron similar to Delta. So I'll just conclude by saying that masks are effective, and we really ask individuals to kind of consider this temporary order as a holiday gift to our healthcare system that as, in recognition of their hard work and wanting to be able to keep our hospitalization as something that's manageable for our healthcare workers. If we can all work together and wear masks, we're going to be better protected altogether. If individuals, of course, are ill, we want them to stay home if they need medical attention, seek medical attention, and if you do experience symptoms of COVID-19, stay home from that holiday gathering, get tested right away, and you may be eligible if due to age or pre-existing conditions for early treatment to COVID that's very effective, but it needs to be done early in your infection. And I'm available for any questions.
Anyone with any questions?
Yes, Sarah, question, how many do we have in the hospital with COVID right now?
We look at three-day average for hospitalization because it's so volatile, and so right now our three-day average is 18.
Thank you very much. Anyone else with any questions? Is there anyone else with any questions? At this time, Sarah, I would like to say thank you, Merry Christmas, and God bless.
Thank you. Pleasure to be with you this evening.
For sure. Next, we have a recognition. 2021 National FFA Veterinary Science Career Champions. I'd like to invite you up, please. Would you please come to the podium? I'd like to ask my colleagues if they would participate. This is a great honor. Aren't they beautiful, you guys? One more time, give it to them one more time. Okay, this proclamation is recognizing the Madera South FFA Veterinary Science Team. Please forgive my back, but these people right here are just amazing. Whereas the achievement of Madera South High School FFA team and staff highlights the commitment, spirit, and pride of the Madera community and should be recognized. And whereas, on October the 27th, 2020, the Madera South High School FFA team won the 2020 National FFA Veterinary Science Career Development Event Championship in Indianapolis, Indiana. And whereas, over 40 teams from the US and Puerto Rico completed, and 22 teams qualified for the event. And whereas the Madera South High School FFA team has been established itself as the national champions by winning first place and host of individual medals. And now, therefore be it resolved, I Santos Garcia slash Anita Evans, Mayor Pro Tem of the City of Madera, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby congratulate the Madera South FFA team on winning the 2020 National FFA Veterinary Science Career Development Event Championship. Sign the 15th day of December 2020 by myself, Anita Evans, Mayor Pro Tem. I'd like to present this to the coach and each one of my colleagues. Cassandra Hernandez, congratulations. Next. Marilyn Batista? Next, anyone? Artemio?
Mercedes Gonzalez.
Congratulations. And Artemio, Councilman Vegas?
How can I, Coach Chris?
All right. Would you like to go up? Felicia, would you like them to go up?
The plexiglass blocks it last time.
Does it block it? Okay, let's sign right here then. Let's have everyone line up right here. You still have the emblem behind you. Let's have a round of applause. This is a great achievement, you guys. Very good. Everyone? I'm trying to smile. All right. All right. Councilman Rodriguez?
I just want to recognize that the FFA, Future Farmers of America, when I was in high school, you know, I had a hard time joining the FFA because I didn't know too much about it, but I got to tell you that once I enrolled in the FFA and I was able to participate in all the ag activities that they do, and beyond that, I was the treasurer in my freshman year and were able to compete, and we went out to Cal Palace, we went out to Cal Poly. I'll tell you, this is something huge, and not too many folks are aware of what the Future Farmers of America hold for our community. So I just want to congratulate you and then continue, because what I did is I failed to pursue that. I stopped in my sophomore year, but I tell you, the experience that I had was great. So I hope that every one of you continues, pursues something in farming. FFA is a great organization, and it'll certainly get you to places. So thank you again, appreciate every one of you.
Thank you so very, very much. This is just a great honor. I am truly impressed. I was there the other day at the fair when you guys received your award, so this is very special. Thank you. Next, we will have another winning team. We have the recognition of the Madera South Cross Country Team, Division Number One. Let's hear it. Once again, may we have you? Man, look at this. Okay, the proclamation, recognizing the Madera South High School Boys Cross Country Team. Whereas the Madera South High School Boys Cross Country Coaching Staff and Team are to be commended for having a tremendous season this year. And whereas Madera South High School continues to excel in athletics, and whereas November the 18th, 2021, the Madera South High School Boys Cross Country Team captured the Central Section Division One Championship. And whereas commendations is due to the team members for their teamwork, athleticism, training, commitment, and required for such a remarkable achievement. And now, therefore be it resolved that I Santos Garcia slash Anita Evans, Mayor Pro Tem, City of Madera, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby congratulate the Madera South High School Boys Cross Country Team on winning the Division One Central Section Cross Country Championship. Sign this day, the 15th day of December 2021, by myself, Anita Evans, Mayor Pro Tem. Congratulations. Yes, please, may we please have the coaches? Yes. Without you, there's no them. That's okay. Thank you very much. My colleagues, please? Congratulations.
Congratulations, Coach.
And your name?
Sky.
Okay, very good. Next, please? All right. He's absent, he's absent.
He did it too.
Yeah. Right here. Next?
Isaac Chav.
Next?
Like to recognize Vidal Luna? Also like to recognize Coach Ramon Delgado. Okay? Coach Andrew Arisatich?
I love that, you know, the vetting and all across country. Do have a famous coach. Please come and stand. Maybe we can, it's got to be kind of crunching, but we'll make it. Thank you very much. God bless. Thank you. Thank you very much. Can I? It's going to be kind of crunched in here.
Gonna be kind of crunched in here. Thank you very much. All right. Cross-country, the board is lit up, so everyone wants to speak to you, so be ready. Councilman Diego?
Ah, yes. I just want to congratulate all these young runners. I wanted to tell you, I'm a runner. Since 1987. And to now, I'm still a runner. Around San Francisco, Los Angeles, Modesto, Llancaster, all over California. So congratulations. You're a good runner. This is a good, a good sport. Keep it up. Thank you.
Also, one more, Diego?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I just a couple of comments, one for the cross-country, one for the vets. First cross-country, I have to tell you that you're amazing in what you do and I, and everyone in our community sees you running up and down those streets, especially our little guys. I'm a school teacher at John Adams and our kids talk about it all the time. And even though they will feed into Madera High, most of those runners I do think are from Madera South. So thank you for inspiring those. You are really setting a platform for those young ones to say that they can do it too. I love the hats. I think that's so cool that you guys got hats. Congratulations. And the vet team, I just wanted to do a shout out. I did talk to them a little bit about, I researched all that it takes to win this, this title. And part of it is they have to know all sorts of animals. And I was surprised, it's not just one dogs. I think when I read it, it was like 15, 20 types of species of dogs that you had to know all about and frogs and lizards and snakes. I mean, it just kept, the list just kept going. I was so amazed that you had to test on all of those. And I did share with them last time that they even get marked off on points if the Band-Aid goes the wrong way. If they open it incorrectly, they get docked points. I mean, it is, it's so unique in what you had to do to get this award. So I commend all of you young people, keep doing what you're doing for the city of Madera and putting our name out there. And be the leaders that you are for the little ones that are out there watching you. Totally appreciate it. Thank you for coming tonight.
Councilwoman, yeah, please?
I just want to say that I'm proud of each and every one of you FFA runners here. And thank you to the coaches, my former classmates, Benny, Sky. Thank you for being here in our community and inspiring our young runners. And thank you all.
And I'd like to just say once again, thank you to every one of you. You make us proud. So continue the good work, FFA as well as the Stallions. That's, that's a cool name and you guys, you represent. So thank you very much. Next, we have a presentation from the tobacco youth and, I can't see, I'm sorry. The impact of flavored, to flavored tobacco on youth in our community. And we have a presentation for that as well. Presentation of totally, of totaling seven minutes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, council members, for the opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Sylvia Romero with, I'm the co-chair with Madera County Tobacco Control Coalition. And I'm trying to find our presentation. So if you give me just a second. Doesn't look like it's wanting to. Open up.
Oh, you know what?
Sorry about that. Thank you.
Yes, yes, you may. Oh, definitely, definitely. Thank you.
No, no. Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
That goes for the vet team too. Good job. Thank you for coming. And the parents out there.
Thank you again, council members, for this opportunity to present. We are here with the, the Madera County Tobacco Control Coalition as well as our students with, students working against tobacco SWAT Youth Coalition Team. And we're really here to highlight the local retail landscape with respect to tobacco and with respect to the availability and how that tobacco affects the health of our youth and our community. And as we continue with our slides, we will be keeping in mind the Department of Public Health's mission, vision, and guiding principles. And I want to present to you some of our local current efforts to help reduce tobacco use, which include again, the Madera County Tobacco Control Coalition, the students working against tobacco, our SWAT Youth Coalition. And together we have a shared common goal, which is to lead the movement against tobacco use. And we like to do this through different activities in the community, including education, surveys, leading town halls, educational meetings, and advocacy for health policies. And to give us some further details, I'd like to present to you, Maryam Mescalera, one of our SWAT members.
Hello, everyone. My name is Maryam Mescalera, based and working against tobacco member. So what is sold in our stores and advertised affects the health of everyone in the community? Two years ago, we surveyed 155 stores in Madera County to see what was available. And we found that almost all of the stores near schools sell flavored tobacco products. I can name about three that are close to my school and my home. Flavors are actually one of the main reasons why kids start smoking. As you know, that they get enticed into the, what, what smells good, what tastes good. And then a majority of the stores near schools also had unhealthy ads outside. And almost half had tobacco ads in kid-friendly locations like near candy or sweets. So here is a map of all the tobacco retailers located in the city and how close they are to schools and parks. There are 61 tobacco retailers in the city of Madera represented by a red dot. Some of the dots are stacked on top of each other, so you may not be able to see all of them there. As I said beforehand, there are three that are close to my home and school as well as another one opening up. The map shows six tobacco retailers located within 500 feet of a school and 19 tobacco retailers within 1,000 feet of a school. So what does this mean for our community? We know low-income neighborhoods usually have more tobacco retailers. We also know that teens are more likely to start smoking when they live or go to a school and place with a lot of tobacco stores and tobacco ads. That could explain why I have seen many of my peers vaping in our class. And it's not just tobacco flavored. It is grape, sweets, candy, any type of flavor. This is, this also makes it harder for people who want to quit smoking or vaping. So it isn't surprising that our county has a higher smoking rate than the state. Last year, one of our alumni from SWAT surveyed 374 teens in Madera and she found that 40% had vaped or smoked in the past 30 days. When the tobacco retailers are located near homes and schools, people health suffers. I will now be passing it on to another SWAT member, Leslie Mendoza.
Good afternoon, everyone. I am Leslie Mendoza, another SWAT member. And what can we do to create a healthy environment, you may ask? One option is to ban tobacco use in public areas like schools, parks, and outdoor dining. On my way to school, no matter what route I take, I either see a tobacco retailer or an advertisement. The good thing is though, we are already doing this in Madera. It could make sense to support this by preventing people from buying tobacco near these areas. So one possibility would be to ban tobacco sales within 1,000 feet of a young sensitive area, like a school, park, or youth center. And ban tobacco sales within 500 feet of an existing tobacco center. We are planning and that, that the planning commission has already been following. They do have a history of denying people from selling tobacco close to schools and other tobacco retailers. So having a policy in place would save time and money for future applicants as well as the planning commission. So anything we can do to be more clear when it comes to tobacco sales is going to be better for enforcement. We have support from local residents and retailers. We surveyed about 300 residents. Almost all of them would, would support a policy to ban tobacco sales near schools and other, and near other retailers. The majority also supported banning tobacco ads outside of, outside of stores. We also interviewed five tobacco retailers in the city of Madera. All of them agreed having tobacco retailers near schools makes it easier for kids to get tobacco products. And to that, having other tobacco retailers nearby negatively impacts their business. So now that we've covered, sorry. So now that we've covered all the availability of tobacco products affects the health of the community, we are asking for your support. As students, we face the pressure to fit, to fit in and may experience this on a regular basis. We hope to have the support of parents, the community, the city council to work together and address this issue. We hope to have, also, thank you for your attention. We hope to see movement and to take action to make the change and continue working together in the future. I wanted to add that this is an important, this is important and matters to me because as an older sibling, I want to look out for my siblings and not only them, but also future generations. So thank you for your time and attention. I wanted to remind you that together we are stronger and we can make the change. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
We are, we are available for questions if anyone wants to ask.
Any questions at this time? For my colleagues?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protem. I did want to ask, as far as your efforts, I noticed that on your stats that you reported there. Now, did, did most residents, you said 91% of residents would favor, and I'm assuming that that's taken a survey in specific areas of Madera, specific areas in the city. Was there?
Can you come down to the mic so we can get that on? Record? Thank you.
Hi. So in the educational packet, we do have information about the surveys that were collected here in the city of Madera. So there are about 232 specifically for the city. And that's where we drew the conclusions from, that the majority were in favor of restricting access to flavored tobacco products and tobacco sales near youth-sensitive areas like parks, schools, youth centers. If you would like further details about this, we can definitely provide you more information about that as well.
Thank you very much.
Yes, and I do have one last question. And in, in, in past years, I know tobacco use among teenagers, especially in school. What's been the trend there? Has that been on the rise since the vape? Or has that been in decline due to more of these types of outreach programs that you guys do? Can one of you touch on that, please?
So as for trend, I know that we have made many countless efforts. And as I said, flavored tobacco really impacts it. I remember one year I was just sitting down and all of a sudden, one of my classmates just pulls out her vape and then she just smokes in front of me and I was like, why? Why would you do that? And then I asked, oh, what flavor is it? And she told me, oh, it's grape. And I was like, okay. Then I remember another year I was there and my teacher was trained, since I believe she was a security guard before. And she also, she smelled like, it wasn't just tobacco, it was a flavor. And she was just like, oh, come on, guys. And she, we had to stay in because someone was vaping. Of course, they were caught. And I've heard a lot of like complaints that near the bathrooms, I even smell it. There's a lot of vaping going on there. And sometimes they don't do anything or they just ignore it. Or after school too, it's just, it hasn't ended yet and it's been on a rise since the e-cigarettes have come out, such as vapes. And it's very, they can be disguisable since some of you, some of them can be, look at the USB drive. So it's been, I believe it's been on a rise since the e-cigarettes and flavors have come out.
So just to be clear, it is on the rise. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Especially among teenagers?
Yes, among teenagers, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay. I also wanted to add to what Marion said is that I believe that it will continue to rise just because as an older sibling, I have younger siblings at home who come to me or like you hear around them. And based on like their behavior and how they act, how they talk, I'm able to analyze and observe what they know. So it's like something that they might hear on commercial, like a commercial ad about the tobacco and flavoring that, it's obviously for like the parents because sometimes with like the new things that are coming out, they're not always like aware of what's new. So like Marion mentioned, there's like, only if you know about them, you'll be able to analyze and see what they really are. Because it can be something like a USB, they're like, just like, some can even look like pens, like regular school supplies. So these ads are new to them. So like when you see something, like let's say for example, with like the new social medias that is now on the rise for like TikToks since the pandemic. I know there was a TikTok sound that has, that was around and I would hear my siblings like, like it, it catches their attention and it's put into their head. So like they'll be doing that, the TikTok song trend or whatever. So it's like they're aware and they also know. So all these like platforms influence them. And it's not only like just outside, it's like even happening at home where you see these ads and like they're intrigued, then they want to know more. And then they're like, they want to expand or they want to get to know that feeling, which is why it continues to rise. And if we don't like put a stop to it or help them out or tell them what is okay and what is not, then we won't be able to help them out.
Great, thank you. Councilwoman, again, please?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Question, have you done this presentation to the city and the county planning commissions?
No, we haven't yet.
Okay, is that something that you're intending to do?
Oh, absolutely. Any opportunity we can find to continue spreading the word and presenting. But this is our first presentation specifically on tobacco access to the council.
Okay, thank you. Next question. In our schools, the city here, we do some presentations to, especially to our little ones. We do a game prevention class for every fourth grader in the Unified School District. We do a literacy program for first grade. And then we do graffiti abatement in third. Have you guys talked about taking a grade level that's mostly impacted and going into the schools where every child at a certain grade gets that knowledge and information?
Councilmember Rodriguez, we have been working with Madera Unified. We were working specifically on a, please forgive me, I might get this, an anti-vaping campaign with the, with the school district. And it was mainly focused and targeted among the high school students because they're having so many suspensions and there was just, you know, finding a lot of students who are vaping on campus and things like that. So we were trying to do that intervention at the high school. However, we have actually gone out to the kindergarten or first grades and done some, we have why animals don't smoke. And really, it's trying to get that message on early on. We have gone out to certain grade levels as well and done some presentations. And we were really amazed when, you know, a classroom, an elementary school classroom started explaining it to us how vapes work. And so they are definitely aware and they know what's going on. And, and don't get me wrong. A lot of students want to fit in. They see older brothers or maybe just, you know, adults who are doing it. And it seems very cool. I remember being that age and I thought it was very cool as well. But the one thing that I, that I did want to mention, and please excuse me, Councilmember Rodriguez, you know, when we talked, when you were asking a little bit about, you know, if it's on the rise, we actually work also with the resource officers. And it got to the point where they started putting sensors in the restrooms to catch students who are vaping. And so, you know, there's a lot of work being done trying to address this issue. But it got to the point where they started locking the restrooms. And so that way only certain restrooms were open so they can better watch and target or, you know, know who's going into the restrooms and making sure they're not vaping because they were having a lot of reports of the students vaping in the restrooms. Um but I just wanted to share that information just to give you a little bit more.
And I think that's wonderful that you're hitting classrooms here and there, but if you were to take a grade level, then every student in Madera Unified would get that information. And right there, you can talk about all the programs that we put in place when we hit a whole grade level. It's hitting every student at that grade level and it trickles down to the other siblings and parents. So I'm just suggesting um take a grade level and sixth grade seems to be the age where it starts to, if you're saying a rise in vaping. Um where the students start to try to figure out who they are and it's influenced a lot. If they don't have the knowledge. To like our fourth grade to stay out of gangs and have that, those tools, then they go into that, that gang. If they have the tools not to vape. As a sixth grader, they at least know the repercussions of what can happen and people that do do it and do not. So um maybe work with Madera Unified and maybe hit that sixth grade, because when they get to that junior high level, it's kind of, it's really hard to change that by then.
I, I absolutely agree with you and that's actually one of the things that we were working on. Uh we were working with the Director of Student Services. And also, um, I'm, I'm, I don't know his title, but I think his name was Lawrence. He's working a part of the gang task force or. You know, doing that intervention with the gangs in the elementary. And so that was the whole idea. Is to go out to the fifth and sixth graders um and do some of that intervention work. Because what we're seeing is that, yes, it's starting in the elementary, right? There, we, we know that vaping is starting in the elementary. It picks up in middle school and then it jumps into vaping THC, also nicotine, but more of the TC and that's what you're seeing a lot more too. In the high schools. So we know that nicotine is kind of the gateway drug and it's leading to all these other things. But yes, absolutely.
And I, and you're, and I would love to sit on a committee or if you, when you have meetings with Madera Unified. To really advocate for taking a grade level and putting this for, so just keep in mind, I, not free till after three thirty. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Montez?
Has a great question, Councilwoman Gagnes. I was gonna ask a similar question if there were any education or um intervention programs in the schools. But I then kind of answered that, but um from that, how did the young people here get recruited? Because it's not easy to come out, uh give up your evening and come and speak in front of the council.
How I was recruited is by, they came to my school and they told us everything that they were about and I'm all. For health and educating our public about the health. And especially since I do have a father that smokes unfortunately. And that's what inspired me more because I wanted to get educated about this. I wanted to help him stop. And also just being a, an older sister like Leslie of four different children, I don't want them to grow up. And have an addiction to nicotine or flavors being the cause of this, their addiction. So this is why I was recruited. Uh I'm also going into the medical field. And that was another reason why I was interested in students working against tobacco and I especially love volunteering. So yes, that's how I was recruited.
I was also recruited um. Because they came to my school. It was freshman year where like you come in, you're shy, you don't know anything or anyone. It's, it's a big change for everyone. And uh when I knew of them with my freshman year, but I was too afraid and I was stuck into my bubble. Where I wasn't out. I just stayed myself, focused in school and ignored everything else. And then now that I see how advertised and the rise that. This issue is getting and how big of an issue it is, I decided to step up and uh here I am now trying to get. Everyone informed and trying to get as much help as possible to make the change.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Viegas? Oh, I'm sorry, sweetie, go ahead.
Okay, I would also like to just add how Leslie said, they came in our freshman year and I've been here since my freshman all the way. To my senior year and just the progress we have made makes me proud and. When I joined this, this is what I wanted to do. It was feeling that for like, that feeling of proudness that I accomplished something, that we accomplished something. Just as like our um, when we passed the policy of that we banned smoking in our, in our parks. That how like, that just made me so happy. And that is just one of the reasons why I also joined. I just love educating our community. I want to make a difference and. I want everyone to have a good, healthy life.
Very good, thank you. Councilwoman Viegas?
Uh yeah, I just want to congratulate you for all your efforts to do uh. Good thing to the community. I don't believe in any tobacco, any drugs at all. So. Thank you. Thank you for all you're doing. Absolutely can succeed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I just want to add. My daughter. She passed in twenty-ten and she had lung cancer. And it was because of secondhand cigarette smoke. So I, I am behind you. I've spoken with you before, I've on, been on your Zoom. So I truly appreciate you. I appreciate the efforts that you guys are putting forward and keep up the good work and let me know whenever you need me. You have any other questions? Thank you very much. Merry Christmas. Bye-bye. Introductions, any at all? None? Okay. Next, we have a workshop. And it is Proposition. Two eighteen, the rate study of water. Sewer, storm drain. And solid waste. And it will be presented by Ronaldo Rodriguez, City Manager.
Thank, thank you very much, Mayor Protem. Ronaldo Rodriguez, allow me to share my screen. So I will be starting off the presentation this evening and then I'll be handing it off to our consultant who are on the call with us, which is NBS. The item before you this evening is a workshop. There's no formal action being requested of council this evening. So again. This is an opportunity for council uh for staff to bring information before council and council has the um, the discretion. Of, of just listening where you can provide us some feedback or, or really to ask questions. Um so in terms of a little bit of background, this is a follow-up workshop from a previous workshop back on August the eighteenth of this year. Dur- during that meeting, the NBS team and city staff provided information specific to water and sewer and drainage rates here in the city of Madera. So um in terms of additional background, the city retained NBS, so NBS does work directly for the city. That contract was brought before the council, if memory serves me, in twenty-twenty. Um since then, uh city staff in NBS has been working diligently to prepare the information for consor- uh for discussion at tonight's meeting. So again, this is specific for water sewer, which is commonly referred to as wastewater, drainage, solid waste and street sweeping. The city also requested that legal counsel peer review the water rate study. The water rates here in the city of Madera have been fairly contentious for a relatively long time. We, we want to be sure that any information that's being brought before the council is thoroughly reviewed by subject matter experts. In, NBS is a subject matter expert and at the same time, we ask for additional assistance from outside legal counsel in coordination with our city attorney. Not to muddy the waters here, but at the same time as we're preparing the rate study, which is commonly referred to as a proposition two eighteen. Which, which outlines how rates are established. We're, we're also developing a second study, which is a development impact study, which is commonly referred to as an AB sixteen-hundred study. That item is not before you this evening. Um however, just, just to simply let uh confirm the counts on the community. Both, both items are tracking forward. The plan is that we would complete the uh, the proposition two eighteen study and shortly thereafter, we'll bring forward the AB sixteen-hundred study. The best way to differentiate it in my mind, hopefully makes sense to everyone here. The proposition two eighteen study is for existing rate pairs. Those are for, for the charges that existing users pay. The, the AB sixteen-hundred study or development impact fee study is for new construction. And, and that's, that's the simplest way that I can probably explain it. So, a little bit more context here, the, back in the summer, um we, we provided a fairly exhaustive. Uh PowerPoint presentation specific to sewer, water and drainage. Tonight, we're gonna recap those three items. However, we're gonna go into a little bit more detail and we'll be introducing. The solid waste and the street sweeping portions of the study. Again, no, no formal action is being requested. The other thing that we should add, the city council previously directed that staff allocate twenty-three million dollars or a hundred percent. Of the American Rescue Plan Act funds to the sewer and water systems. During the presentation this evening, you will see how those twenty-three million dollars are gonna have uh. Are gonna impact the rates and, 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 and impact them in a positive way. Where, where it's gonna help pay for a lot of the, the necessary improvements that are required. With that being said, we do have an evolving situation and I say it's evolving, it's very fluid. Later this evening, item D one on your agenda is specific to Senate Bill thirteen-eighty-three. Senate Bill thirteen-eighty-three was passed a couple of years ago. However, again, it's fluid. There's a lot of moving parts to this bill. We do have uh Joe Kalpikoff and his team are here this evening. And we'll be talking about that in item D one. The reason why I bring it up now is because we will be talking about the NBS rate study and then later tonight, we'll be talking more, a little bit more about uh solid waste and trash. One thing uh which we can talk about in item D one is that local communities, we are required to comply with Senate Bill thirteen-eighty-three. Uh we are moving very aggressively towards that. The challenge we have is timing. Madera's not alone in this. All communities are involved in this because the challenge we have is some of the guidelines came out relatively late. And the state of California is not uh, is not real generous with their timeline, so we're moving very aggressively. The, the Senate Bill thirteen-eighty-three is gonna cause rates to be adjusted. That's very short and simple. No one likes to deliver bad news, especially as a city manager. Um however, we, we have to react to Senate Bill thirteen-eighty-three. We currently contract with Mid Valley Disposal. We have one year remaining. That contract is, is, does have to be amended to comply with thirteen-eighty-three. The reason I say all of this. Is some of these items are distinct and separate, yet they're all interrelated. And there's a lot of moving parts and that's why I bring them up now. We have the Development Impact Fee Study, again, maybe sixteen-hundred. We have the rate study before you this evening, Prop two eighteen. At the same time, we have Senate Bill thirteen-eighty-three. Again, a lot of moving parts. We're definitely not trying to confuse everyone or anyone, but it's, again, there's a lot of moving parts to this. So we are gonna have some decisions on the horizon. Uh again, um. As a city, like every jurisdiction in California, we do have to comply with thirteen-eighty-three. Item D one tonight's an introduction um with an adoption of potentially January. I'm saying potentially because that's a, that's at the discretion of the council. Um at some point, we will have to take action on the rate study. And that again, water, sewer, drainage, solid waste, no action, that's why the nautical service is at a future date. And then also at some point, we'll have to amend our contract with Mid Valley to comply with SB thirteen-eighty-three, again, at a future date. So with that being said, I'm gonna turn it over to our consulting team. Which is NBS. We have Alan with us, we have Greg and we also have Jordan. Uh city staff, specifically Vicky Crowe and Keith and team and Anthony have been working hand in hand with the team to, to, to gather all them. All of the information. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to the NBS team and um, and thanks a lot for your time this evening, council. And so I'm not too sure who from the NBS team will be taking it over, but I'll.
Yeah, so this, this is Alan High Street and I am leading the water, sewer and storm drainage studies and letting me share my screen with you. So this is gonna be a short version of what we did in August uh for the water sewer and storm drainage utility. So basically quickly, we're gonna go through uh. A little bit of Prop two eighteen, the background and then the approach we use for the rates. And then we'll just march through the water utility, the sewer utility, the storm drainage utility and then kind of what are the next steps? And some of those Mr. Rodriguez just covered, so. So Prop two eighteen has been around uh for quite some time, but it governs how rate setting is done in California for enterprise funds. And basically it limits the authority of local government uh to impose these fees and charges. And it really requires voter approval for increases in these charges. Uh this is really something that came about when they tried to uh. Put some other limits on uh Prop thirteen. What folks, Prop thirteen came in and reduced property taxes. There were. A lot of folks trying to increase fees for user charges, which were unregulated at the time. So that's why Prop two eighteen came into place. So basically you've got to make sure that your charges are limited to the cost of providing service. And you really can't impose those for general governmental service that are available to the public. And that's really kind of your uh. Your police and that type of thing. Uh so user charges for water, sewer and solid waste. Uh under Prop two thirteen are subject to what we call a protest vote. That means um you have to have people. That are gonna protest a rate increase. And when you look at the number of accounts you have, you have to have fifty percent of your accounts protest that plus one. Uh to stop a rate increase. User charges are different. Uh they are acquire an affirmative vote. Uh where you have more votes in favor of the increase than opposed. So it's a little harder to make that change in storm drainage. If you look at how we looked at our rate studies, um for all these utilities, we kind of follow a basic approach. Uh one, we just try to follow a uh national standard. Uh for water rates, it's the American Water Works Association uh manual on that. For wastewater, it's uh. A manual on rates from the Water Environment Federation. Uh and this is an approach that's widely used across the industry. Everybody kind of falls back to these uh standards. Now, when we do that, we kind of have this three-step process. First, we do what we call the financial plan. And we look to see what your costs are, uh what your revenues are. And what we look at uh is what do we need to increase our rates by to make sure that we have a plan that uh covers costs? Once we know how much we have to raise financially, then we do a cost of service analysis where we. Allocate the cost of that money we have to generate to the customer classes, just based on their uh loadings or use of that utility. And then when we know what we need to generate from each customer class, we then do a rate design analysis. And in that rate design, you know, what's the best way to meet that, that need? So if we're doing rate design, it's kind of the, the basic goals are you want to follow cost of service. Make sure you're equitable and you're non-discriminating, but you also have to make it set up so it's easy. For the city to administer and, and for your customers to understand the rates. Uh and so that's important too. And you want to provide revenue stability. You know, so those are kind of the goals uh in general we have across the studies. Now let me jump into the water rates. When we looked at the water enterprise financial plan, you know, basically uh. Again, these are the costs for the ongoing uh. Operation of the plant. And so it's the operations and maintenance costs, which we refer to as O and M. And then it's any capital cost and that might be in the form of debt service and loans you have there. Or plan pay-as-you-go capital projects. And then also you want to have a little bit of reserve there. Uh both operating reserves and even a capital reserve, uh if you have any hiccups in the system, so. Now, as was mentioned before, uh there was twenty-three million dollars that the city got from the American Rescue Plan Act. And six million of that we applied to the water enterprise. And so basically with. Those funds and along with uh. Reserves that were already there, we were able to pay for a lot of capital. So. And they're all, and the staff is always continuing to work on trying to find additional grant funding. So. Right now, we haven't found anything additional, uh but as you see on the next slide, we'll show you how we were able to cover things. And then the last point, rate revenue requirements. Basically, if you look at your costs, your O and M, your debt service and your capital, and then you subtract what we call non-rate revenues. Those are things that revenue you get that aren't user charges. So it might be licenses, fines, any other application fees, whatever. Interest on earnings, that type of thing. Uh that would come off of what you needed from rates. Now, if we look at uh. Our financial plan here, when we look at the capital reserves uh and ARP funding, really avoids the large rate increases. Let me explain this graph to you. If you look uh. If you look uh across the X axis, that is just looking at fiscal years. And then on the Y axis, you have millions of dollars. And then the bars, the blue bars, the base are uh your operating costs. The thin yellow bars are debt service. And then the green is actually rate-funded capital expenses. So you can see fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, there's a lot of uh capital that needs to be paid for there. Now, the lines going across the black, solid black line is what our revenues would be under your existing rates. And then the red dots are revenues under your adjusted rates. And the gray line is, in the scenario we ran, is what would happen if you didn't, wouldn't have had that grant? And that's what your rates would have had to been if you didn't get the A R P funding of six million. So you can see right now that uh because you got some of that uh money from the rescue plan, and you're using some of your reserves, you're able to uh keep that uh red dotted line uh relatively flat. And so uh, whoop, I'm sorry, I jumped an extra slide here. Now, one of the things we looked at, we got asked uh to look at two options for the water rates. Uh, because we know there's been some controversy regarding uh some of the tiered rates for water. So one of the first options we looked at was just put all the customers back on a uniform variable rate and just get away with the tiers. Uh, the second option was to uh essentially create a two-tiered inclining rate structure. When we looked at uh tiered rates for water, you you currently have three tiers. Uh, and in our opinion, it'd be hard to justify three tiers. It looked like you had some cost differences there that would make uh sense that you could get to two. Uh, but quite frankly, one of the reasons that you have attorneys looking at that is there's a lot of rate cases going on across the state uh where folks are looking at tiered water rates and and do the uh tiers actually represent cost of service. And uh, that's all started in twenty fifteen with what they called the City of San Juan Capistrano uh case, where they were sued that their rates did not represent or their tiered rates did not represent cost of service. And that makes sense because the the plan was back then was you wanted to have rates that were going to encourage water conservation, so you wanted to have a lot of rates and make them relatively punitive, so that the folks in the higher categories were encouraged to use less water. Well, if you don't have a cost basis for it, that's essentially been losing in court. So I know the folks planning uh across for water resources across the state uh aren't happy about this, but uh tiered water rates uh have been attacked in in the court, and uh in most cases, they're losing. Now, if we look at the current and proposed rates here, uh you know, on that previous chart, uh we showed that that line was going relatively flat, almost down, where you can see the fixed meter charges here actually drop uh a little bit uh as you move forward. So for the five-eighths inch meter, that's sixteen eighty-eight goes to fifteen fifty-one. And then if you were looking at the uh commodity rate for the non-residential, uh and this is the same under both options for non-residential, the commodity rate would drop from two forty-one to two twenty-six. And then uh it would be two twenty-six if we had a uniform rate schedule. If you went to two-tiered systems, you'd have a dollar ninety-three uh per hundred cubic feet at tier one and go into two sixty-eight in tier two. Okay, so that gives you an idea of what the impact is there. Now, if we look at this, this compares water utility bills. And the gray bars are your uh current rates for single-family residential. Uh, the solid yellow would be what you generate in tiered grades. And then the striped yellow is what would happen with uniform rates. So if you looked at the first block there, the average winter water use is about eight hundred cubic feet. And you'd see uh the rates drop a little bit uh for those using, if the tiered grade was in place for single-family, uh be a little higher for uniform. If you look at the average monthly use of fifteen hundred cubic feet, it's almost a wash. And then in the average summer bill, uh of twenty-two hundred cubic feet per month, that the uh uniform rates actually are a little bit lower than others. So that kind of gives you an idea, but all in all, for water, given the fact that you your use of reserves and getting the six million from the rescue plan has been able to kind of hold rates uh relatively steady, so there's really not much there. Now, if we compare that to where you are with other communities, uh the same charts just have uh cities across the bottom. And then the rates, when you look at it, on the components of the rates, the bottom uh block of the rates shows a uh fixed charge and then the variable up above that. So you can kind of see where the the money comes in. But basically, uh Madeira is substantially lower than Turlock and Selma, but uh you know, there there are a couple of communities like Clovis and Teleri that are are quite a bit lower as well. But all in all, that these are relatively uh close. So the good thing here is, given those funds, you don't really have to do much. Uh, in fact, on this, on the water side, there'd be a slight decrease from what you're doing now. Let me jump to the sewer. Uh, again, the financial plan looks at what we're gonna recover from rates, again, looking at O N M and debt service. And any plan page go capital projects, and then trying to keep our target fund balances where we need them. Well, in this case, we took uh sixteen million and applied to the sewer enterprise. Uh, the reserves weren't high here, and they had some capital here, so this, we had to uh apply more of the rescue uh Plan Act money here. And again, the rate revenue requirement is kind of the same formula. Take your O N M and then any of your capital costs and subtract any non-rate revenues. Now, if we look at this graph, uh kind of the same as before, our fiscal years on the X axis across the bottom, dollars going up the uh the Y axis. Uh, the blue being O N M expenses again, the debt service is a little larger relatively uh compared to water. And then the cash-funded capital reserves, you can see that there's really not much shown there because uh we were able to use the rescue plan uh money to keep that that down. So if you look at uh the black line, you can see with your rates there, uh you'd be okay with the rescue plan for a couple of years, but uh ultimately you, uh we recommend you try to get that uh those rates moving up a little bit, and your revenue generated uh to cover for some of these other cash-funded expenses you're gonna be having in the next few years. Same thing here, you can see the impact on uh the A R P A, what that would what that would have done if you would have had that money, you would have had some substantial increases that you needed. Your current rate design for sewers fine, uh the volumetric rates based on average monthly winter water use, January to March, and and that's typical of the industry. And so there's really no new rate design that we need on the sewer side. Now, if we look at the residential uh monthly charges here, you can see again, it stays relatively flat in the first year, but then it starts moving up uh over the next few years, again, trying to get into place money to get some of those future capital improvements paid for. And uh that's how that kind of lays out. And then for the non-residential uh fixed and variable charges, you can see the commercial uh fixed charge went up a little bit from nineteen to twenty-one. And then you can see how some of the different charges for the uh non-residential uh changed over time. In some cases, uh because we looked in uh at this, and some of the strengths uh on some of these uh were quite a bit lower than others, you can see in some cases, some uh commercial users actually see a decline, some people see an increase. So really, th- those based on the the strength uh for that wastewater loads to the plant. Now, if we look at the sewer utility bill uh comparison, you can see how that kind of kind of march up there, and that so that just tracks, so it stays relatively flat for a year and then starts uh hitting a an increase there, but still, all in all, not not bad, given that you've got uh your own M increasing, and then you've got to try to get some capital in there as well. Now, if we compare this, uh you can see to other communities, uh again, you're kind of in the middle of the pack. And so you know, I'm not sure why Fresno is is so much lower or or Visalia. Uh, sometimes it's got to do with uh grant funding or uh just the way they do it, but uh that's kind of where you're sitting in the middle of the pack. Now, one of the things we did is we just added your water and sewer bills together and to compare. And uh, you know, just you're standing still a little bit on the I won't say middle of the pack, you're trending towards the higher side in this comparison, but still uh close to your neighbors. And so that's how those trend. And then storm drainage rates, you know, that's a pretty small enterprise fund, it's not generating the the money compared to water and sewer. There's really little expenses annually, uh and we want to just keep a simple rate structure there. But if you look at here, you know, so we're not even generating uh a million dollars in the these rate parameters, and basically, O N M drives what we have here. And quite frankly, just the O N M itself going up is what what drives a rate increase there. But even then, if you looked on per month, you'd be going up uh from two dollars to two dollars and eighty cents uh a month, so you know, again, not not huge dollars we're talking about here. So in terms of the next steps, uh again, in the overview of the Prop two eighteen process, uh the procedural requirements are, you need to send a notice of a public hearing to all the customers and property owners. Uh, they need to hold a public hearing uh no sooner than uh forty-five days after you've actually mailed the notices to them. And then if you have no majority protest, uh new rates can be adopted. Now, as I mentioned again, for storm drainage rates, that's actually not a protest vote, it's an affirmative vote. There you would need more people voting for it than against it. So really, the next steps would be, you know, staff will return to council for formal action once the rate study is complete. Uh, now, what do we need to complete the rate study? Uh, really just some direction on uh the water, uh what option do you prefer? Now, we can still do the study with two options, but if you, it would be good to talk about and uh, you know, if you want to go back to a uniform rate and get rid of the tiers. And then the council would approve the rate studies and proposed rates. And then you could start the Prop two eighteen process where you actually mail the notices and and set the public hearing date. Uh, and again, no sooner than forty-five days after mailing. And uh, so that's really kind of where you're at. So uh, I'm happy to take questions and answers on this stage, or you want, we can uh jump right into solid waste. Uh, any preference on how you'd like to do that?
We can go on, any questions?
Yeah, I have a question.
Okay, Mr. Rodriguez?
Yeah, thank you. So I I know that we have um uh the the American Rescue Plan dollars that have really helped the rates from from staying, I mean, based on your your charts, they're staying pretty steady for the next couple of years. But you know, I I would be naive not to think that the cost of delivering water is gonna continue that soon after, and I don't see that uh we may be getting rescue dollars anytime soon. Um, so just in your experience there, I mean, what what's been the trend with with rates here, especially within surrounding communities that you presented there and you and you you compared us to? I mean, is the fact that the, you know, we we're dependent on groundwater and and obviously uh the Central Valley certainly faces some deficits when it comes to um uh, you know, just uh water in general with with our tables. Um, what what's what's to expect of us here moving forward in the next decade or so? I mean, we can, we can certainly put a band-aid on it, but I mean, at some point or another, are we gonna surprise our our constituency by having a a rate increase not expected from them?
So so I'm gonna answer that with not really the as part of this rate study, because it's a, now we're talking water resources planning a little farther out. And so uh what it's really gonna depend on, I mean, groundwater is is one of the cheapest sources of water around. I'm not sure where you sit with uh your sustainable groundwater management plan, uh if you're able to continue to pump the same amount of water you have, or can you pump more for growth? Uh, other communities in the valley, your districts I've worked with, uh are gonna be hit because they don't have uh that groundwater, uh safe yield, they need to uh you know, import some water, and in those cases, uh, you know, you're gonna need to bring in a uh surface water source of supply. Now, I'm not sure that that's really the case in in Madeira, and this is the Sigma implementation has to be done by like twenty forty-two, so you know, it's it's a long-range question, it's a good question, uh but there's uh unfortunately, there's not much in in these current rates you can really do to prepare for it. Uh, other than at the parts of the cost of the study are uh some of your charges related to Sigma, your participation in that as well, so those are covered uh here. But uh, does that answer your question?
Uh, yeah, in a part, I mean, I I think, you know, I I it's not that I want to hear this, but uh, you know, obviously, being able to to allocate six million dollars to this uh enterprise fund, obviously certainly helps. But you know, based on your charts, had you not had those six millions, and you know, we we'd be facing some some pretty um hi- high rates on that, and you know, in comparison to other, I mean, I I don't know if this helps any, but obviously, in comparison to others, we're not too far away from Clovis, yes, and the fact that uh uh they're on one one side of the 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 charts, but yet they're on the extreme on the other, right, when it comes to their sewer. Overall, I think it's what what hits you, hits your pocket at the end of the month, and it's not too far away from there, as I think we're off like three or four dollars there. Uh, but I mean, this has been a very sensitive issue for us, obviously. Trying to keep our rates down is is of of most importance to us. Uh, but we also have to be realistic in that, you know, there's a cost to doing that, and um with these dollars, I I hope uh um that future councils, I mean, obviously, we don't know what my term is here or anybody else's term, but future councils certainly uh uh will have to make some tough decisions. But I do thank you for answering that in 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 the best way you could, so thank you, appreciate that, Alan.
Thank you. Tom, woman?
Thank you, Mayor Protim. Alan, a question, if you can pull up the slide that talked about
Thank you, Mayor Protim. Alan, a question, if you can pull up the slide that talked about the different inch mains, like one inch, two inch?
Okay, okay, hang on a minute here, I'll have to present again. Okay, now I'll need to slide back. I'm assuming you were talking the water rates.
So at current rate on an inch was five forty-two and then it's going down to three thirty-five. That's like a two hundred and seven dollar and change difference. Why is that such a big in, decrease?
When you look at the, the ratio of water and, and we do that there, if you kind of track that, it's a, part of that has just got to do with some, some of the dollars we're trying to come up with, but I'll have to check that one specifically because it is, it is a bigger percentage than some of the other drops. So.
Okay. Then you'll get back to us. Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other questions?
Well, thank you very much.
Okay, and then Greg will hop in and I'll stop sharing and.
All right. Greg?
Okay. Let me share my screen here. Okay, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, and you can see the slides.
Yes.
So I'm going to be covering, covering the, the solid waste rates. Many of the things that Alan talked about in terms of the Prop 218 process and administrative steps are going to be very similar for this. The methodology is actually fairly similar also. So we're going to go over a little bit of the background and then talk about the methodology. There are some differences between solid waste and, and water and sewer. Talk about the financial plan, cost of service, the rate design, impacts on the residential and commercial bills, and then talk about a few other recommendations that we have. So just as background, as you, I think, know by now, solid waste is, is quite a different animal than water and sewer. There's actually not as, nearly as good a track record as to where the, the existing rates came from. We understand they were kind of created internally quite a few years ago. So there's, you know, when, when that's the case, there's always this question about, you know, what's going to happen when we do an actual cost of service analysis? And some of that is coming up in, in this, in this case. So they, they, they are, you know, and on one hand, you have the city for water and sewer, the city operating, the utilities and the enterprise funds. In this case, you know, the service is actually contracted out to Mid Valley. That's quite different than the city staff has administrative input. And then there's some other costs that affect the rates. So the, the really big thing besides the fact that we're taking kind of the first look at a cost of service in quite a few years, this, you know, the estimates were somewhere between thirty and forty percent for most public agencies to implement SB thirteen eighty-three. Supposedly, these are supposed to be implemented by January first, just in the, you know, the end of this, near this next month coming up. The city is in its negotiations with Mid Valley to see what kind of contract extension may be negotiated there. So that we, we won't know for a while. We're kind of going on the basis of what we know at this point. Some of the other things that we've addressed in this study is the city had an interest in incorporating street sweeping costs. We actually looked at storm, possibly storm drainage. Your city attorney was not comfortable with that approach, but with the street sweeping being incorporated, a fairly small service, somewhere around four hundred thousand a year. And, and he was comfortable with us incorporating that as a, a solid waste-related service to incorporate in the cost. And then there's also a city administrative fee, which was worked out a few years ago between Mid Valley and the city to take over some of the city's duties, replacing bins and, and some other services, about two, two dollars and thirty-three cents per month for residential customers. So that's also been incorporated. That was not getting collected from, from customers before, it was just getting paid from the city to Mid Valley. So that's, that's been incorporated. So in terms of the methodology, the things that Alan went over are very similar as a financial plan, there's a cost of service analysis. And then rate design, and again, in this case, rate design is not going to change much. Pretty much, it's a, a flat monthly service charge for the, the types of service. The cost of service is, is kind of broken down by customer classes, mostly residential versus commercial, and then there's other things like recycling and compactor services that, that, you know, all of these are, are defined by the type of bin that you have, the number of pickups per week that you have. So the financial plan estimates the costs that need to be recovered from customers through their rates. The, you know, the breakdown of the, the costs is, is pretty straightforward. Mid Valley is about seventy percent of the entire annual budget. There's about eighteen for, eighteen percent for transfers out in interfund charges, about eight percent for street sweeping costs, and then four percent is administrative costs of city salaries and benefits. So I apologize for this graph. I know there's supposed to be a minimum on that font size, but this is the, the projected table that's in the report, which I believe you have a, a copy of also. So these are the annual projections by type of cost, including the, the revenue sources at the top and then the, the type of expenses in the middle here. And, and these are before we've added in the SB thirteen eighty-three surcharge costs. So if you note down here at the bottom, there is the annual rate increases. So apart from the SB thirteen eighty-three surcharge, there's four years of ten percent rate increases and then the last year is, is dropped down to four percent. And that's just because the last several years, the, the solid waste enterprise fund has been running a deficit. And that's just something that's not going to be sustainable in the long run. I've also circled our, the first year of our five-year rate adoption period. This, this number down at the bottom three, it's about five point four million. And I just wanted to point that out because this reflects the rate increase, but we're, we're not implementing that rate increase until April. So basically, it's one-fourth of the year's revenue from the rate increase. And the full rate increases really won't kick in until next year. So there is a number that's higher than, than this, based on that ten percent increase that you'll see later in the, in the actual calculations of the rates. So just looking at your reserves, there is a, a minimum reserve target down at the bottom. So it should be around one point seven, one point eight million is what you'd like to target. The second from the bottom row kind of shows the ending balances without rate increases. So obviously, that continues to go down. You end up with in five years about seven point one million in total deficit. So really, that, that's, you know, turning this around and getting back to a positive balance in your reserve funds is, is one of the key things that we need to do here. So some of the, in terms of cost of service allocation, obviously, we don't have direct access to staff salaries, equipment costs, profit levels and those kinds of things, which we, we have that kind of information for water and sewer utilities because the, the city actually runs that budget and is involved with every detail there. So we worked cooperatively between city staff and Mid Valley staff to look at some allocation percentages to figure out what was reasonable. And so the, these are, you know, I don't know, want to say they're common sense, but they're, they're reasonable estimates based on Mid Valley's experience and, and what staff knows about these costs. So for, you know, from the big picture allocating costs, two-thirds generally of the revenue should come from residential customers and about one-third from commercial. And then from the commercials, thirty-four percent, twenty-six is commercial bins. So the, the largest part of the commercial program really are just the commercial bins from two, two cubic yards up to six cubic yards. And then eight percent are from other commercial services, recycling, compactor and, and so forth. And then in terms of the solid waste program itself, about eighty percent of it is collection related. That, that's the most equipment intense part, twenty percent is disposal related. And Mid Valley serves quite a number of other communities and, and they have, they have access to different landfills and, and different tipping fees. But for, for the city, you know, their, their best estimate is that about twenty percent and, and that comes out to about this twenty-eight dollars per ton for tipping fees that you see down below there. So that's about twenty percent of the, the overall cost versus eighty percent collection. And then, you know, obviously, within that, the different types of service are going to depend on the container size and the number of pickups you have per week. And that's where Mid Valley's, they were, they were very cooperative and very helpful and, and getting some reasonable estimates. But obviously, there's some differences there, like, you know, if you're picking up something every day versus once a week, residential accounts tend to be right next to each other in neighborhoods. Commercial often is spread out and takes more time to get the same number of pickups. So there was a lot of practical advice that we got from their operating experience that was helpful in, in creating and calculating the rates. So this is another one of those tables with lots of numbers. Those of you who may want to study this later, you know, the, the numbers are there. And the, the previous red circle, this column called rate revenue. So this is the ten percent, includes the ten percent increase if you are collecting it for the entire year. So that's why that's a larger, that's, that's what you have to collect through, actually through the rates, even though we're only getting three months this year. Next year, the, the rate increases will be from the beginning of the year, you'll have a full twelve months. But the, the way this is set up is that here's how the costs were allocated in the second column, the rate revenue from the different customer classes and types of service and the percent of the total that, that, that comes out to. And then the thirty-five percent surcharge for the SB thirteen eighty-three is this middle column. So the, the total rate revenue that needs to be collected from these rates that, and this includes street sweeping, the admin fees and the thirty-five percent surcharge comes out to the seven point eight million here. And, and again, the, the percent from each customer class is listed in the, in the right there. So this is kind of the guts of, you know, where the charges come from. The, the net result is, is, is kind of interesting that the residential basic service with the three containers increased by thirty-eight percent, went from twenty-three, twenty-two to thirty-two dollars a month. And, and, and this is actually a little surprising because you have a thirty-five percent increase just for the SB thirteen eighty-three. So there, you know, there was some, some adjusting between commercial and residential customers. You know, as I said, nobody was real clear or had a great understanding of, of where those, those rates in the past came from. So based on the best information and the, and the best estimates from Mid Valley, these are how the, the, the rates are coming out. So commercial, the most common service, the most number of customers is two cubic yard bins, once, collected once a week, and they went up by one hundred and eighty-two percent. They're, they're probably the highest, so clearly, they were, they were getting charged less than the actual cost. In fact, I think the, the city was paying Mid Valley more than they were collecting from the customers for this service. So here's the, this is, this covers more than ninety percent of the customers here, primarily the, the residential customers. The, the three standard containers is what most people have. The rest of these are kind of miscellaneous charges if you have a, an additional blue or green or gray container. There's carryout service, but here's where you see that the twenty-three, twenty-two go up to thirty-two dollars and then over the five-year period with four, ten percent rate increases and one, four percent, it ends up in five years being forty-five, seventy-seven. And then these are commercial, but the ninety-six gallon containers. The, the other more detailed rates are at the end of the, the presentation. We can look at those when we get to the end there. So this is a graphic representation of what the bills will look like. So on the left, the gray bars, the, the single-family rate, the current rates, the green is when you include the rate increase and the sweep, uh, street sweeping and the surcharge. And then the last part there is if you add the two dollars and thirty-three cents for the, for the admin fee that was not being collected in residential customers. The middle one is a, a multifamily and there, there's a break in those rates for the first two units. They're charged pretty similar to, while they are charts the same as single-family homes. After that, there's, there's a break for each additional unit that is, is collected. And that's shown on the right here. So for most multifamily residential, their rates will go from twenty-two fifty-nine up to twenty-nine forty-five.
Greg, excuse me, this is Arnaldo. Would you mind going back to that slide there? Question. On that slide, I believe, under the proposed, we, are we including, and this is a question, are we, we are including under the proposed street sweeping and the surcharge? However, for the existing, the twenty-three, twenty-two, I do not believe that includes street sweeping. Am I correct?
Yes, that's correct.
I think currently, the existing current rate is not twenty-three, twenty-two. The twenty-three, twenty-two refers to what the city's paying Mid Valley for a single-family home. Street sweeping, my personal bill at my house is a dollar ninety-three. And so I believe that is closer to, I can't do math in my head, I'm sure so, it's, it's over twenty-five dollars on the existing. Am I correct in saying that, Greg?
You know, I'd have to look at your chart again and, and it's a little confusing because the city pays Mid Valley a, a certain rate for each of the customer types. The, the city charges the, it's the own customer something different. And then there's some adjustments thrown in there. Yeah, you could be right on that. I could have gotten the wrong one for the existing customers. But we'll, we'll, we'll correct that and send a, a corrected chart.
Is there a way to, this is Hilda, is there a way that you could do it so that you have separate solid waste of figures and, and graphs versus street sweeping? I think it's confusing particularly because of past practice. As your city man, the city manager has noted right now, customers pay twenty-three, twenty-two. The city's paying the two dollars plus, the city doesn't have currently the SB thirteen eighty-three. And all of a sudden, they're, they're just going to think that it's for trash, that they're, all of a sudden, they're going from twenty-three, twenty-two to the twenty-nine, sixty-seven and thirty-two. Is that why you combined them?
Uh, you mean, so maybe break these bars down into separate section, sections for each of those costs?
Yes.
Yeah, uh, yeah, that, that's certainly easy thing to do. We can break that down and, and send an update, which, you know, staff can share with, with the council or, or the next meeting when we come back.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this one?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, Greg, I got a question. So this is based on assume, assumed rates, right? And you mentioned that we are still negotiating with Mid Valley. So are, are you coordinating, or I don't want to say coordinating, were you talking to Mid Valley or, or is that? Or or is that just the trend that you see in the market?
The information that I've been uh privileged to be shared with me. Uh indicates that uh that Mid Valley is is suggesting that the rates would be lower than this if they can. Uh successfully negotiate an extension on their contract. And 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 that's about the extent of what I know about that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um. Thank you, Mayor Potem. I have a question, Greg, about um the slide that just showed the difference in the surcharge, if you can go back one. I think it was a slide ten.
Slide ten.
So you're talking um the percentage is a surge charge is percentage is thirty five percent you're projecting, is that correct?
That's correct.
Um and so looks the bulk of it is coming from commercial bin services. So if I'm not mistaken, um Mid Valley had some foresight and I think purchased. Um bins, knowing this was coming and the compost and trucks, so. The thirty five percent to me seems to be so really high to even project that.
Um ye- yeah, well, uh. You know, I guess my understanding is that this is our best guesstimate at this point, uh as opposed to. Waiting until we have a final number, um our direction, city staff is we need to bring. The information that we have forward, knowing that the city's negotiation with uh Mid Valley. Is probably going to result in something um lower than we're putting in here now. So this, to some extent, this is kind of a a placeholder.
Okay, uh the next question is, we've not seen any of these PowerPoint, this of your PowerPoint. Council's not seen any of this. So when you're putting up this these bar graphs and you're putting up this um. This chart of numbers, we've not seen it till right now.
Okay, I I thought you, well, you, okay, good point. Um. Uh this is the first time that we're presenting this. Uh I think the. The analysis this summer, um. Since we're working with Mid Valley, there's still a lot of information being collected, so it wasn't ready in August when. Water and sewer were uh brought for a first view.
Right, but this is December now. It would have been nice to had it before tonight, so we could have digested it. And highlighted and had questions, because I mean, I'm trying to go through it and as and you're flipping to another slide and I'm still like kind of going through it. Um so I'm just saying that would have been nice to have had before tonight.
Yeah, agreed. Uh, yeah, I think that with the SB thirteen eighty three uh is. Was was kind of a real difficult thing for staff to deal with to figure out, you know, how we're going to. Fund this, trying to get estimates from Mid Valley. Um I may, I maybe uh Arnold can uh comment on the timing, but. We are intended to bring this back in um in January.
Can that would be correct. Thank you, Greg. So what we can do after tonight's meeting, as Greg indicated. Um and I has um and earlier in the presentation, um there there's a lot of moving pieces to this. Th- this is not a simple matter. I I understand and I think as Greg has indicated, this is a lot to digest. And I think it would be appropriate for for some of these numbers. Uh when we're saying they're hot off the press, they are literally hot off the press. And one of the things that we were trying to do was put together some big picture items. Just so council has an understanding of some of the challenges that we're up against. Um again, it's it's fluid, uh there's a lot of moving parts to this. What we'll do is we'll provide all this information. We'll we'll share it with with council, we'll put it on 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 the city's website, we'll make it available to the community as a workshop. And then when we come back in January, that's we'll provide the community and council with approximately a month. And hopefully, within the next month, we'll have a lot more information. As Greg indicated, was city staff has been meeting with with Mid Valley. Um those are our ongoing discussions. Um. Uh I don't want to speculate where that's going to land. I think that would be unfair to both Mid Valley and the city and uh. But as those discussions move forward, we'll we'll come back to the council. The one thing we do know is that we have to comply with thirteen eighty three and that's going to be a bear. The thirty five percent um surcharge for thirteen eighty three. Um they, it was estimated between thirty and forty, so we thought thirty five, we split in the middle and seemed appropriate. Uh again, that's an assumption. And so as we move forward, we'll continue to provide counsel with information. Um and the community, we'll be sure to post it on our website so everyone has access to it. And um and we'll we'll continue to 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 sharpen our pencils um before we come back with the formal recommendation.
Thank you. Um one more question for Greg or Arnoldo. If we would have had this presentation, I think we'd have had more questions. So when you come back in January, they might have gotten answered from. The council and staff. So if we're we're making the decision to get rid of the tier rates. And go to just um the regular flat rates, that would be knowledge we would have needed tonight to to give. Staff and the consultants um information on going back, and this is what the direction we were looking at. But not having that information, it's hard for me to say, you know, I'd rather go no tiers to flat or either way, so. When you come back in January, is it a workshop or are we making decisions then?
Um well, it's going to be based on council direction. I think the appropriate thing to do would be to have a follow up workshop with council. We we'll get this information at council, we'll have a follow up workshop with council and um um at our meeting in January. And we in a in a couple items from here, we are going to be talking about the about the agenda, or I'm sorry, about next year's calendar. And and it's probably appropriate for us to potentially add a meeting just to discuss this. We can go in a little bit more detail. And at the same time, we'll uh we'll provide counsel with the tables and charts, so you have an opportunity to to talk about it with some of your constituents. To to crunch some numbers on your own and and to add. And to ask both staff and MBS some very tough questions, because these are not simple and I'm not going to sugarcoat it. It it it's it's challenging.
Now, I understand it's the balancing act, but again, before I got in council, they had raised water rates several years and um. This council here, uh the the three that are here sitting here, uh the veteran ones decided on um. Taking some money out of our. Thank you, um Councilman Rodriguez, to kind of offset the the percentages. And so I'm just looking at um. What is best, because I know for, we did it twelve years, we didn't raise one dollar in water rates or sewer rates, so I know. Um we are behind the 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 ball here and I know we need to catch up and that's why the council in the past put those. Percentages in place, but um right now things are tough and I can't see us um moving. Not knowing the information, especially when I'm out in the public and they're saying, hey, my water rates went up again. I can say, well, we went, we got rid of tiers, we're doing this now, this is going to help. Um without that information, it's really hard to go out to our community and give them. Um the background, especially if it goes up five percent, three percent in in a race. That's how, that's where I'm coming from. Thank you.
Uh yes, thank you. And I I would add, and I think you've done this in your other presentation, um with the water and sewer is. Uh you know, when we try to um. Give this information to our constituency, I think it's best that we show them visually. So I think it would help for an exercise to show them an average bill. Of what that increase would constitute, you know, and and I I I say this more for residential. I know that when I see my utility bill, um I I look at the total number that I'm paying at the end. Sometimes, you know, I'm very selective, so I I tend to look only at the bottom line. Although rates might increase in the disposal, rates might increase in sewer or water, what have you. I think I think for our constituency would be a a very uh um important exercise to take is that maybe we bring. Um what that looks like when you combine all what the average increase would be or what the increase would be on your average bill. And I'm not sure if you have that here, Greg. I I know you you used that on your previous uh slides there with the. Water and sewer, but when you combine all three services, is that something that we can bring uh to the council as well?
Yeah, we we can bring a chart with the sewer, water and solid waste uh shown together.
And and, yeah, and kind of to what our attorney alluded to is maybe break that down. Uh so that we can define it. There's, it it's done in our invoices. We see that, but I think and we're asking. Our constituency to pay more for these services. Let's let's explain why. You know, and I think in these workshops is a good opportunity for us to do that, but at the same time, I think it's best to visually. Uh see why that increase is happening and where exactly those those increases are taking place.
Correct, yes.
Yeah, it is interesting when you look at those three utilities together, you've got the American Rescue Act uh money, which is is a. Quite a significant uh in in flux of money for um, you know, to pay for some of those costs. It's kind of the the opposite with the solid waste. The state is is imposing something like a thirty percent um. Increase for new programs that the city really has no option but but to do. There's there's fines if you uh if you don't comply.
Are there any uh American Rescue plan uh fund dollars there, Mid Valley, that we can utilize to offset that? I take it that there isn't.
No.
Not today, thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions?
I believe uh Greg was going to come move forward on his presentation, is that correct?
Yeah, here's here's uh just a couple of the other, the basic residential service goes up by thirty eight percent. Um and we can break that down more. Um and then some of the commercial are are higher. So we were getting down to these bills. Um I think we're at the commercial. So um, you you know, and and part of what we're looking at here is that. Some of these commercial uh rates are actually um. Less than the city was paying Mid Valley for for these exact services. Uh so not only that, but there's some some rebalancing between residential and commercial. Uh that is is more uh accurate. So um it's unfortunate that some of these are going up the way they are, and these are probably the most three common types of commercial service. Um and and again, we can, we can break these down into the different bars for the different types of costs. So some of the other recommendations coming out of the study, um as I mentioned before that. There we, it's a little confusing that the city has a set of rates that they pay Mid Valley. And then there's a different set of rates for the same services the city charges its customers. And then there's things like the admin fee, uh and then the there's this, the um AB thirteen eighty three surcharge. That is is on top of all that. So um I I think staff has has made a point that uh as confusing that as that is, we need just. One set of rates, uh which is you what what the city is going to be charging its customers is what. The city pays Mid Valley and it's it's all in. Obviously, a a big component of this is that the contract negotiations with with Mid Valley need to be completed. Um and and just a note on this, from a Prop two eighteen standpoint, it's always um acceptable. Uh whether or not it's comfortable to, if you adopt a certain um set of rate increases. In the future, if you ever decided that you didn't want to uh either adopt the rate increase that year or adopt something less than. Was passed through the Prop two eighteen process, there absolutely no restriction on that. So if we implemented a thirty five percent uh surcharge for the SB thirteen eighty three. And for whatever reason, um there was plenty of money in the reserves and you didn't need to raise the rates ten percent in one year. You can make it five, you can make it zero, you can make anything less than ten percent. So just just as a an administrative uh mechanism, uh that's the way that works. Um so is, as we mentioned, that the rates that we've presented here are probably going to collect more. Than uh they would need to after you finish your uh contract negotiations with Mid Valley. Um so with that, um the next steps, uh. So the plan was to return with uh a another discussion and another workshop on January nineteenth. Uh at that time, uh staff will be asking for a formal uh recommendation and action by the council. Uh hopefully, that uh would go into the Prop two eighteen process, just like uh water and sewer. There would be uh notices mailed out, uh a forty five day minimum noticing period and then a public hearing at the end. Um assuming there's no uh majority protest, the uh council would have the option to adopt the the rates and implement them. And with that, we're done. If if somebody would like to look at the um. Two sets of commercial rate tables, those are there. Uh any other questions we can discuss?
So we're going to get a copy of this, um City Manager Rodriguez?
Yes, Councilwoman Gago, I'll be sure to package it and we'll get it over to council. And Greg, since I have you still on the line. If if necessary, and this is a discussion that we'll have uh shortly with council. If necessary, would you and your team be available January the fifth, which is the first Wednesday in January, uh to to continue the workshop?
Uh I believe I would be. Uh are you talking about water and sewer also?
Um just hypothetically, all all of them.
Okay.
I would be available.
Great, thank you.
Um Arnoldo, I I'd also just um mention that um. The draft report based on these numbers without any other changes to them is also available and that explains things in in much more detail. Um I I, there's always two kinds of readers, some some just look at charts or some just look at the end results, others. Want to uh read the text and find out why something happened, what's the background in it. So that draft report goes in a lot more detail, uh for those of you who would who would like to uh. Kind of see what went behind the scene in creating these numbers.
Okay, thank you, Greg. So January the fifth would potentially work for you?
Yes.
Thank you.
Council? Mayor, may I?
Sure.
Thank you. Um I can certainly understand uh the city council's uh desire to get more solid information regarding these matters. Uh and and you should be getting more information and more detailed information. My only concern today is that this is a draft. And uh more work has to be undertaken and and my concern would be that. Members of the public would be receiving something that's in draft form and it could create confusion, consternation. Uh more issues than not and and I understand uh the goal was to get all this. Ready for the January nineteen meeting, but from my legal perspective, uh perhaps it's to. Slow it down a little bit so that you can get it all, something that's a little more gelled, a new iteration, if you will. And then distribute that version instead of what you have right now, for example, on the on the water uh. Uh part of it, uh as your city manager stated. Uh special counsel is reviewing that because of the pending litigation. Against many cities and districts, including the city of Madera on water rates. And so special counsel is reviewing that and at this moment, as we meet, there are imminent, there is an imminent meeting that is being scheduled. Between special counsel, the consultants and uh and staff concerning the water rates, so. Uh you know, if if we're going to end up taking out the water tiers, why distribute something with water tiers and and get people riled up? Those are just my my observations and comments to you, counsel, to consider and maybe asking the the manager to. To give you more information, but maybe not what's in front of you right now.
Correct.
Uh so, I'm sorry.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Uh yes, so with that, um are you suggesting that we give some type of direction regarding whether or not? Um uh the tiered rates would even be something we look forward to?
No, I think Hilda is giving, saying to give direction not to put it on the website because it gives misinformation to our community members. And because it's just in draft form.
Correct, yeah, correct. So I mean, but based on the legal council's um findings, it's what's taking place in other cities, I mean. Maybe it'd be a prudent approach for us to also um start looking at maybe removing tier breaks.
What I can tell from the uh from the email that we received just today from special counsel, there are questions and it. Uh we're surmising that it has to do with uh the tiered rates, but there could be other questions. Uh we're surmising that it has to do with uh the tiered rates, but there could be other questions concerning the water rate study. And those are my concerns. That, you know, you're you're sending something out for the public that's not ready to be digested.
Correct.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Proton, so this is, I mean informational, I mean, there's no action required today, correct? So we can just take in the information and then we get the in better numbers and we can, that's how I understood it. So um why don't we just follow that direction, and so okay, we'll come back, and there was originally scheduled to come back on the seventeenth? Nineteenth.
Correct, so one of the reasons why we didn't wanna put the information out prior to the meeting is because, again, it's in draft form. And we had moving parts until four P M. today. And so one of the things that we didn't want to do is come back on the nineteenth and say, council, in two weeks, we want action, rather what we wanted to do. Is to introduce some 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 concepts, yeah, just to provide council and the community an idea of which direction we're going. Because again, S B thirteen eighty-three is upon us, or it's quickly coming upon us, and we simply wanted to, um you know, uh. You know, just provide everyone with an update in terms of where we're at, just to notify the community and council that we are moving forward, we're reacting. Uh but again, there's a lot of moving parts, but but as you've noticed, there are some me, uh some some key missing components to it. That and we're still sharpening our pencils, and and again, once once we have, especially in the tiered grades, I think everyone's expressed some concerns. Um and that's why we elected to bring in special counsel specific to that reason.
Yes, I mean, in speaking as in layman's terms, to present something like this right now to the public. They would be totally confused, so to have it broken down and to to give the the tiers. If we're going to do that would be great, but right now, it's it's quite confusing, so.
You're absolutely correct, Mayor Proton, and so again, this evening was not for formal direction, it was a workshop, just so we can. Surface a lot of the items and council brought up today, um it's there, there's, this is challenging to digest, and it's at the same time, it's challenging to present.
Yes.
Um and so as as we're moving forward as an organization, I think at the next meeting, we'll have fleshed out some of the key details, hopefully. And then we'll continue to come back, so again, I I at this point, I'm not advocating for January the fifth. What I think we would wanna um ask council is uh and the N B S team. Is to, if if possible, keep that agenda date open, uh keep that evening open. And as the information comes before staff over the next couple of weeks, if we feel that we have the necessary information. To put together a complete package that that makes sense, we would schedule it on January the fifth, but if not, hopefully by January the nineteenth.
Okay, thank you, Mister Rodriguez.
Uh yeah, just um pointing out what Councilwoman Gago's had mentioned earlier is in regards to um. The advancement of maybe the the draft um ahead of time so that we too can dive into it, uh not sure if this current draft. Uh would serve us purpose also, I think it'd be good to see how um we came up with certain rates, so I I think I would. Appreciate it if I can get that as well, not necessarily to the public, but at least to to the to the council. Yeah.
Okay, um can let me speak with our legal counter after the meeting and uh whatever information we can put out, we'll definitely do that, thank you.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? All right, let's move on to item B, the consent calendar. Matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items, if discussion is desired, a member of the public or a member of the council may request an item to be removed. From the consent calendar, and it will be considered separately. I'd like to pull B eight. B eight. Under the service alert of the Northern California Nevada U S A membership agreement. Alicia? Is that okay?
I'll I'll make a motion if you'd like to approve item of the consent calendar with the exception of item uh B eight for a separate discussion.
Okay.
Second.
So may we ask if there's any public comments? Do we have anybody online this?
Do we have anyone on online for public comment for any of these items, please?
No one on Zoom.
I do have a written public comment um in regard to item B eleven from Mister Horl. Um he states, I wanted to attend the city council meeting, but I will be out of town and can't get back in time for the meeting, please advise council, I would like to be reappointed. To the mosquito district, John Horl. That was complete public comment.
Okay, then, thank you. My colleagues, are we passing this? You have a motion, please?
Motion in a second.
Second, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Name, any names? Okay, motion passes. We need to be, go back and review. Okay. We need to go back and review B eight under the service um alert of the Northern California Nevada. U S A membership.
Yes, Mayor Proton, Mayor Proton Evans, um I had a question for uh Public Works Director Foss. Let me pull this out. Um I was reading through the report, and my question is, um it's saying that in two thousand twenty, we received uh three thousand seven hundred fifty-one tickets. Which billed the city five thousand two hundred and fifty-five dollars, my question is, um. Are these tickets being billed by residents, are they billed by us, are they billed by P G and E? Um and what are we looking for in this year's count, um? Because that's a lot of tickets, just I did, it wasn't, it didn't give me enough information to really understand what was happening there.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Gago, now you guys can hear me okay?
Yes.
So um let me try to explain it, this one is a little bit confusing, and I had to look into it myself, actually. The the contract we're in currently with them is actually not changing as far as price wise at all, it's coming back to you today for um. Verbiage change in the contract. But as to your question, let me try to lay out how this works, and hopefully it'll explain exactly, answer your question across this, so this is the eight one. Eight one one that you call if you're gonna be doing any form of digging, we call that same number as a city. So it's broken down into, it's a state organization, it's broken down into two um halves, northern and southern California. Or in the northern California, I think we're probably the first one in northern California. And the way this works is anytime anybody's calling in a new dig, which is, that's important to say, because many times residents will be calling in. A um a refresher for the day, like they didn't get to it in time, or they'll be calling in an expansion for a dig. And what this is, is you guys have probably heard the term U S A, and that's when somebody's gonna be doing any type of underground or construction, they have to mark the ground to make sure there's no. Gas lines, the water lines, anything like that underneath um where they're gonna be doing construction site. So for your question, who calls it in very much does matter. When it's called in through P G and E, then P G and E actually gets a code that they upload through the eight one one, and they're going to be paying it. If it's a water line or a city line where a city resident calling in, so if you're doing your own construction and following the rules and you call eight one one. That's going to be billed to the city, so it does get paid through an enterprise fund through um the water department. So you, what you said, we're always a year behind, because the way it works and how you're actually charged. Is there's one giant pool, and the pool for last year was just under eight million dollars total for all of the northern California. Residents, the way it works is they just divide that by the percentage of calls that your jurisdiction made. So we're fairly low on the list, we had, I think you said we had three thousand in um. Two thousand, we're a year behind, so I know for for the year, for last year, we're up to about five thousand. During COVID, destruction has gone up quite a bit, so there was a lot more calls uh brought in. Typically, we have about a two thousand dollar bill a year total for on average. Um for the eight one one services, it can be higher, it can be lower, it is relatively low, this will probably be the highest year in the last ten years. In the neighborhood of somewhere around five thousand dollars for an annual service fee to uh this company. Now again, the way it works, though, is it's just there's one large pool, if if the city says, if the city. Let's say that we make four percent of the calls into that pool, then we pay four percent of the overall bill. We're not gonna hit four percent, um but I'm just using it as an example, I think the example in your um council report was one percent, which is probably more. Realistic of where we're gonna hit. The total budget um for that division is about eight million dollars annually. So does that kind of answer your question, I know this one can be complicated, and how it works is a little bit confusing, but it's basically every. Organization in the state is sharing the system, and then how many calls. We generate, we pay that percentage of calls to that system. Does that make sense? I could explain it a little bit better, maybe if there's any questions on it.
No, that thing, I I I've just been on council several years, and that's the first time I've seen it, that's why I had questions on how it really. Worked and how where the money was coming out of, and how many tickets we actually receive and who calls it in, because that's a a very important eight one one, U S A eight one one. Because it saves us, if somebody digs improperly and hits a a water line or a gas line, um in the long run, it's the best thing to do, thank you.
It is very important, and as to why is this the first time you've seen it, this is a um continuous contract, there's no end date on it. So the only time you're seeing it this time, actually, is they changed the verbiage a little bit, not even the rate, so um this should be the last time you see it. So if it's.
Thank you, good to know, good information.
Mister Rodriguez?
Yeah, and Director Foss, since you're at it, um what constitutes a um the 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 completion of of a ticket, is it uh? Any call to eight one one and and uh forgive me if I um um you know, this sounds a little um. New, but uh I I I'm assuming that when people call either four one or nine one one, there's calls that are being made, but what constitutes this to be an actual ticket? Um is it a full service that they provide or a full uh uh? They log down something that states, hey, this is where some digging is gonna happen, and they call someone else, is that what constitutes a full ticket?
Correct, and pretty much exactly as you described, so I'll give you a typical scenario um here at Public Works. Somebody will call eight one one, ourself included, so if we're gonna do our own construction, we will actually call that number eight one one, will generate a ticket. The only tickets that are going to be counted to be in the percentage of the pool is new tickets, so there's several different kinds, there's extensions, which means if you're. Expanding your dig, you're not paying extra for that, uh renewals, which means if you've never got to the dig yet, but it's the same site, you need to get it remarked. Um none of those count, only new tickets, and the way it'll work is where whoever calls it in. Whoever's lining it in is 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 going to pay that tab, so P G and E calls it in, is gonna be doing construction, then they're going to be. Their new ticket is who's going to be paying that bill, so if a resident calls in, they give the address to the eight one one service. We come to work and we get emails um from eight one one saying this location needs to be marked. Just because we're marking it doesn't mean we're paying it, it's who's generating that location to be marked. And we don't always have um a say in who that is, it's going to be when they call eight one one. Is it a resident, they're gonna be checking and screening that, is it a resident, is it P G and E, who's calling it in and for what purposes, that's who determines who pays that actual ticket for coming in. These can be, then last year, uh this can take a lot of our task, we've had some weeks where we've had in excess of. Four hundred markings in a week um to go out and mark the locations that need to be dug, so these, this is a very. Um important and big service that is, and extremely important, though, that it all does get marked, so. Does that answer your question, it's only new tickets, and yeah, where the location is, is who's gonna be paying it.
All right, thank you very much, without, I motion approve B eight.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries, okay, at this time, I will be closing um public comment, and we'll be moving on to the public hearing now. We have nothing there, so we have um item D petitions, be its resolutions, ordinance, and agreements. And that will be presented to us by our city manager.
Thank you very much, Mayor Proton. Stated earlier, we will be talking about solid waste once again. So earlier this evening, council heard a discussion regarding S B thirteen eighty-three. S B thirteen eighty-three is commonly referred to as organic waste disposal reduction recycling, it's solid waste collection bill. Again, passed by state assembly. S B thirteen eighty-three, it's it's a very complex uh list of regulations related to organic waste reduction recycling. It's all the waste uh collection, from speaking with Joe Kalpakoff, who represents Mid Valley. Um I, he he will probably attest, I think I heard him last week, and and his team say that it was the most complex set of updates in. Several decades, if I recall, and I definitely don't want to misquote him, so this item this evening. Allows council to begin the process, it's the first step required for compliance of S B thirteen eighty-three. Our existing municipal code is out of date with the assembly bill. And so what one of the requirements from the state assembly is that every local jurisdiction. There's four hundred and fifty plus cities in California, fifty-eight counties, everyone ha- every one of them has to comply with Senate bill. Uh there, if I recall, I believe there are a couple of exceptions for for some relatively small communities. So the the deadline to adopt is the beginning of 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 January. So S B thirteen eighty-three was originally passed in twenty sixteen, however, unfortunately, the regulations were not approved until November twenty twenty. The challenge with that, though, is that those have been evolving, and a lot of industry leaders have been trying to figure out what it all means. Again, this one has not been easy, so we do have a very short window for compliance. In short, the goal um is to divert seventy-five percent of organic waste from landfills and to recover twenty percent of edible few. Food for human consumption. So um in short, um what are some of the regulations? Um again, it's to provide organic organic waste collection to our residents and businesses, to establish an edible food recovery program. To conduct extensive and exhaustive outreach and education uh to uh for capacity planning. To 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 generate mulch from organic waste products, to inspect and enforce compliance, which now. Is 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 required of the local agency, so in this case specifically the city. And then also, we uh we're also required to maintain uh exhaustive records. Um those records do have to be submitted at Cal Recycle, which is the state of California. So again, it is complex, uh city staff is recommending. That rather than trying to marry two existing or or an existing ordinance with the new ordinance, rather what we do. Is we adopt an entire new ordinance, sometimes it's a lot easier than trying to mix and match. Um the proposed ordinance would would prevail if there's a conflict with another section of the Midair Municipal Code. Um again, the goal of the ordinance as required by S B thirteen eighty-three is to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, that's. That's that's largely the goal, is outlined by S B thirteen eighty-three. As as we spoke about earlier, Mid Valley is the city's current solid waste provider. Um right now, it 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 would be extremely challenging for the city on its own to try to comply with S B thirteen eighty-three. I'm I'm confident there's some cities doing it, however, again, it's very challenging, especially for a community to varze sides with uh with our resources. Mid Valley has identified um some potential cost increases associated with S B thirteen eighty-three. As as you heard this evening, there's an ongoing proposition to eighteen study. And council may recall, uh uh on the early, on the very early, at the onset of the last discussion. Uh we discussed that there's a lot of moving parts to this, this is one of the moving parts. Uh we are currently uh continuing those discussions with Mid Valley, that item is not before council this evening. The item this evening is simply to to introduce a new ordinance, again, in compliance with S B thirteen eighty-three. In our haste, we did identify after the fact, after the item was published on Friday morning, we did identify a couple of relatively minor. Uh type of graphical errors, uh these do not reflect any substantial changes in the language, rather. In the six sections on the screen, we identified those sections specifically referenced an incorrect section of the code itself. So if memory serves me, I think they're referencing chapter eight, they should be referencing referencing chapter five, and so again. And so again, they're, they're very minor references. At the next council meeting, assuming council takes action to approve this tonight, we, we will incorporate those, those six slight modifications. And, and again, they're only reference sections, um, and they're very, very minor. So staff's recommendation this evening is to waive the full reading, which is approximately twenty five pages. And to introduce an ordinance to amend the municipal code to add a new chapter, specifically chapter three A, relating to organic waste, and then also to confirm that the ordinance is exempt from CEQA. I know that there's been a lot of discussion this evening about the rates themselves. Again, those, those, those are ongoing discussions between staff and, and Mid Valley. The goal would be that if council were to approve this, we would return. Uh, we were planning on January the nineteenth, however, it, should we have a meeting on January the fifth, de- depending on how the information, um, evolves over the next couple of weeks, this will probably come back on January the fifth. If not, I would anticipate this coming back before council in January the nineteenth. Regardless of what happens with the rates, uh, we are required, we being the city, are required to adopt an ordinance for compliance with SB thirteen eighty three. Uh, we do have Joe Kalpakoff, who's here in the audience, who I'd like to think is a subject matter expert. Um, if memory serves me, he sat on the state task force representing the Central Valley. And, uh, he, he's, uh, he, he, he knows a lot more about this than I should do. Uh, so with that, I'll turn it over to council. Thank you.
Excuse me. Do we have anyone here, Alicia, wishing to speak?
I have no written public comment. Mark, do we have any callers on Zoom?
Uh, no one on Zoom wishing to speak.
Anyone in the public wishing to speak?
All right. I'd like to close and ask for a motion, please, if, if the colleagues, any of them like to have anything to say? I'm asking for a motion there.
Questions from council, Lisa? Did you ask any questions from council?
Yes, I'm requesting questions. Okay. Any questions?
Move that we, uh, uh, introduce and waive full reading. The D one.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Both? Alrighty. Let's move right along. Let's move to the one, I mean, to excuse me, to D two. Consult service agreement with the TJM, TJKM for design services for traffic signals. And new signal controller upgrade. And this is going to be presented by?
That'll, that'll be, that'll be, uh, myself, Keith Helman. Thank you, Mayor Proton, council members. I'm going to go ahead and get my, uh, screen share going. This item is in fact for consultant services for the design of, of traffic signals at three different locations, uh, with the design firm of TJKM. Uh, the city has previously in the past received a congestion management air quality grant for new traffic signals at, uh, at numerous locations. Uh, there are three of them. Uh, one is at Cleveland Avenue in Granada. That intersection is currently a, a four-way stop. Also at the intersection of South Street and D Street, uh, also a four-way stop. Wanted to go ahead and mention, uh, South and D Street. That's been on our radar for, for quite a few years. There's been concerns through that area with regard to the safety of the intersection. And it was only until about a year and a half or two ago that, uh, that the intersection actually met warrants. We had been moving up to, uh, adding other measures to try to go ahead and improve the, uh, the safety of the intersection. One of those was flash and stop signs here recently. Uh, those flash and stop signs will stay in place until, uh, the signal goes into place. We also have traffic signal controller upgrades at the intersection of Howard Road and Pine and Olive Avenue, West Yosemite through Q Street. Uh, that intersection has a, uh, has an interesting name. It is called a hoppy queue. Um, so it always makes me think of pancakes, uh, but, uh, this intersection, in addition to the upgrades, it actually will have a, uh, uh, some additional hardware installed, hardware and software installed to have adaptive, uh, timing at the, at the location. So what it'll do, do is, uh, it'll, it'll attempt to adapt for traffic volumes and improve what you see out there presently. The intercept, those intersections aren't, uh, terribly efficient at the moment, especially, um, at the intersection of Howard and Pine. It's, it's hoped that, uh, this adaptive technology will improve the intersection somewhat. Uh, those locations shown on the map, we have, it actually looks like four signals, three locations, however. Um, in summary, this, the city released the RFP for this particular project on September twenty ninth, twenty twenty one, for the three locations. October twenty sixth, the city did receive engineering proposals from TJKM and Peters Engineering. We essentially received two proposals. After our review, we chose TJKM based upon their qualifications and their understanding of the project and, and, and a number of other things that they proposed in their proposal. And the amount is for one hundred twenty eight thousand, seven thirty eight, seventy seven. Uh, there would be no impact to the, the city's general fund. Uh, the funding will come from CMAC and local transportation funds. Uh, and the single projects are already in the, uh, well, they're in the twenty two, twenty three, they're listed. Apologize that they'll be in the twenty twenty two, twenty three budget with CMAC funds and matching from LTF, uh, developer impact fees and measure T funds. Uh, the recommendation from staff is to adopt the resolution approving agreement with TJKM in the, uh, amount of one twenty eight, seven thirty eight, seventy seven for the design services at the three intersections I've mentioned previously. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. We also have Steve Bettencourt, the project manager on this. He's, he'd be happy to answer any questions as well.
Thank you very much. Um, Alicia, do we have any public comment?
I have no pu- uh, written public comment. Mark, do we have any callers?
No one on Zoom.
And anyone in the public?
Alrighty. I will now close the item and ask for discussion from my colleagues. Anyone? So move to prove D two as presented.
Second.
Alrighty. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
None to oppose. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We'll move on to D three, the agreement to the agreement between the city and the MV Public Transportation Incorporated pertaining to Madera Metro. You have that one, Renego?
Thank you, Mayor Proton. I believe David Huff will be joining us this evening. Am I saying that correct, Anthony?
David's, uh, going to be, uh, answering questions. I'm going to go ahead and present on behalf of David.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Let me go and share my screen. Thank you, Mayor Proton.
Thank you.
Okay, um, I think I'm sharing the wrong screen. Let me stop it and show the right screen. Sorry. Okay. All right. Is everybody got my screen?
Nothing. No.
Not yet?
Not yet.
Well, that was the one I gave. Okay. Sorry about that.
No.
Let me try this again. Oh, that's maybe why I didn't push that button. Okay, here we go. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay. One more time. All right. Now you got it?
Yes.
Okay. So, um, tonight presenting item D three, amendment to the agreement between the city and MB Public Transit, uh, who is our, are currently our, our public transportation contractor, uh, regarding, uh, Madera Metro. Uh, for an introduction, uh, the city contracts with MB Transit, uh, for public transportation services. The contract needs an amendment related to two issues under the current contract, uh, one for holiday service hours and one for revised driver certifications. Um, in relation to holiday service hours, uh, the existing contract, uh, the transit service is not provided on any holidays recognized by the city Madera. So, uh, after researching nearby communities, specifically Fresno, Turlock and Clovis, it was determined, uh, that the city agencies continue to provide services, albeit limited hours. Um, so in order to provide expanded services, staff proposes making changes, uh, as detailed in the following tables. So the top table, table one, is the current holiday schedule without transit services. Uh, there are, uh, eleven holidays, uh, where the, there's no transit service available to this, to the city residents. So what the city, or what the staff is proposing is to have transit, limited transit hours on these proposed holidays, which is the middle table, table two. Uh, and it, the, the the ones that are, um, I- italicized are not holidays, but those are days that we want to provide services to, to the residents. So we're expanding services, even though they're not considered holidays that the city recognizes. And then the last table, table three are the four holidays where we will still not provide services. We will not be operating on New Year's Day, Independence Day, Thanksgiving and Christmas Day. Like I said, these will be Saturday hours. Now, if these holidays in the middle fall on a Sunday, uh, the, no, no service will be provided. Um, it's just strictly for when they fall during the week or on the Saturday, that can be limited hours. The second part of this is the driver certification requirements, uh, currently under section three point one nine of the contracted, uh, California Vehicle Code compliance of the Management and Operations Agreement with Mid Valley, uh, Public Transportation. It reads contractors to comply with California Vehicle Code Section eighteen oh one point one, which is a poll notice program in sections twelve oh eight oh four point six, which is bus operator certi- certificates. It is noted that while the existing agreements, uh, don't stipulate all that all drivers receive dual certification as a standard practice, drivers have been required to attain both the general public, uh, pair of transit vehicle, the GPPV and the verification of transit training, VTT certificates. Uh, the, the GPPV certificate, uh, is required for a driver, uh, to possess uh, when transporting students at or below the twelfth grade to or from a public or private school activity. Uh, as it relates to Madera Metro, the certification is needed when operating a, a dial or ride service vehicle to transport students at, uh, below or the twelfth grade. And to transport a minor to or from public or private school activity is specified when loading or unloading the passenger within the bus loading zone. So if you're going to do any of those, you, you're required to have the GPPV certificate. As far as for the verification of the, the verification of transit training, a driver is required to possess a VTT certificate when operating a transit bus. Uh, as it's related to Madera Metro, this certification is needed when operating the fixed route service vehicle to transport all passengers. So reasons to amend the, uh, transit driver certification requirements. Uh, in order to attain the required GPPV certification, drivers are to complete, um, the needed testing through the DMV, uh, Department of Motor Vehicles and the California Highway Patrol. And due to testing availability, the hiring process has been, um, a minimum of four months, not including the additional training required, uh, and provided by MVP T, uh, Inc. to their, to their employees. Uh, it is also noted that while the existing agreement does not stipulate all drivers receive dual certification as a standard practice, drivers have been required to, to, to get, obtain both the GPPV and the VTT certificates. Um, due to the COVID nineteen pandemic, a transit service was drastically interrupted, um, causing staff shortages. Uh, this amendment will expedite the hiring process, um, thereby limiting, uh, transit service interruptions. And by adding clarifying language to the agreement, it's anticipated that the recruitment timeline will be greatly reduced. So the recommendation by staff is to approve a resolution to amendment three to the agreement for the management operations of Madera Transit Services Agreement with MB Public Transportation, uh, related to the holiday service hours and the driver certification requirements. I have any questions? I can answer some of the simple ones. David's going to have to answer the tougher ones.
Thank you very much. Do we have any public comment, Alicia?
We have no written public comment. Mark, any callers on Zoom?
And no one on Zoom.
Thank you. Anyone in the public wishing to speak on this item? We have none. Mayor Proton.
Thank you very much. I'll close this and ask for a motion. Do you have any questions? Oh, excuse me. Oh. Thank you, Mayor Proton. I just wanted to thank staff for bringing this to our attention. I've heard a lot of residents say that we're not running when they, they really need some services. So, uh, thank you for doing that. It's important that they get to where they need to be. Also, we have our Madera Metro signs up at our bus stop. So that's a big win for our city. So thank you staff for, um, getting those posted up at those locations. They look very nice too, I must, must add. Thank you very much for that as well. I'd like to intervene a motion.
Yes, Mayor Proton, I move to reapprove item D.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There we go.
Thank you, council.
Thank you very much. I'd like to now move on to item D four, requests for Pistorresi ambulance paramedics to extend the lease agreement for the space at fire station fifty seven. And Matt, you have that?
Yes, I do. Uh, Mayor Proton, uh, hello, mayor and Mayor Proton and council. I'm going to attempt to share my screen. Let me know if you can see it.
Not yet. It's trying.
Uh, let me try a new.
There you go. There we go.
Perfect. All right. So, uh, once again, this is, uh, item D four. Uh, this was requested by Pistorresi ambulance paramedics, uh, to extend the lease for a space at station fifty seven. Just a little background history on this. On June sixteenth, uh, this year, we came to council, uh, with a lease agreement for Pistorresi. Uh, the agreement was scheduled to end December thirty first of twenty twenty one. Pistorresi has requested an extension of this agreement for three months, ending March thirty first of twenty twenty two. Uh, the city has allowed Pistorresi to house an ambulance at station, at fire station fifty seven since nineteen eighty two, so approximately thirty nine years. During this time, the city has borne utility costs and maintenance costs for housing the ambulance. Uh, Pistorresi pays for cable and personal use internet at the fire station. It's worth noting that during these, uh, preceding thirty nine years, the city had been, had had no rental agreement in writing between Pistorresi and the city. This just kind of shows, uh, you know, an overview of the city and, and where station fifty seven is located on Schnorr and Howard. Um, what kind of spurred the conversation was, uh, fire department growth. As the fire industry has continued to evolve, new apparatus and equipment are re- are required. Spaces become limited at station fifty seven. Pistorresi uses approximately three thousand square feet of shared juice and a sole use area of four hundred and thirty seven square feet. The area, the area that they utilized was designed and built for storage of firefighting gear and a cleanup room. Today, the safety gear is being stored in the apparatus bay and the, uh, gym is also located in the apparatus bay. This is kind of just some of those shared spaces. You can see the washer and dryer out in the apparatus bay along with, uh, some of the workout equipment. In the middle photo, you'll see, uh, a gear locker and that's just part of the gear that's stored out in the apparatus bay. But all that gear there should not be exposed to daylight and should not be exposed to, uh, diesel carcinogen smoke. Uh, the far right photo is the, uh, area that the fire department needs to move some of these items out, which is currently utilized by Pistorresi ambulance. The station layout, uh, the little blue donuts, the, uh, shaded areas, those are the areas that are shared space. And the rectangle red, um, that is the, uh, sole use area for Pistorresi ambulance. All the other areas are shared space. Uh, the council remembers that the, uh, the council approved an agreement with the Madera Historical Society to receive two antique city fire engines that will be housed at station fifty six and station fifty seven. The extension of the, uh, Pistorresi lease will delay ownership to the city of the apparatus. Uh, these fire apparatus are currently stored in De Silva's Car Barn and the family has given verbal permission to Pistorresi to store the antique fire, city fire engines for an additional three months if, if this agreement's approved. The extension will also delay, uh, some of the capital outlay projects at station fifty seven. Uh, here's just some pictures of the, uh, engine two and engine three, uh, that will become, uh, ownership of the city. uh, that will become uh, ownership of the city, uh, once we're able to secure and, and store the, these vehicles. The plan for the additional space, uh, it is anticipated that once Pistorresi relocates, the space will be used for the following. Storage of safety gear to keep it out of carcinogenic smoke, uh, being generated by fire apparatus. Firefighter health and wellness equipment, which is also stored in the apparatus bay and various other supplies that are uh, exposed to these same carcinogens. Uh, the fire department did order some additional equipment, um, which was purchased in anticipation of the expiration of this lease. And the equipment, this equipment will have to remain stored in the apparatus bay and won't be able to be utilized until uh, the space is made available. Uh, the lease agreement is expected to generate six thousand one hundred and twenty dollars in revenue. Should Pistorresi remain for the duration of the extension of the agreement. Should Pistorresi vacate before the end of the agreement, this would decrease. From these funds, a portion will be used for utilities and maintenance costs of housing Pistorresi. Any remaining funds will be used to make improvements to the fire station. Uh, this is just some uh, year, yearly cost for Station fifty seven utilities, little over fourteen thousand. Um, maintenance cost is kind of variable, just depends on year. Uh, and the city provides supplies to Pistorresi at estimated at nine hundred and forty dollars a year. This is kind of just a breakdown of the, the shared spaces and square footage. So, you know, you can see the medic room is not a shared space. All the other spaces other than parking is shared. Which is just over three thousand square feet utilized by Pistorresi. Some assumptions uh, to the lease. Uh, the cost of commercial rent in the city of Madera is between fifty five cents and a dollar fifty per square foot in the city. Industrial space is forty four cents to fifty five cents per square foot. Staff use the industrial rate of fifty five cents per square foot. The three month extension of the lease is another assumption based on council's direction. Um, either party may exit the lease with proper notice. So just to break down the square footage, uh, two thousand forty dollars a month. You know, the fifty five cents, the utilities and maintenance and supplies. Uh, th- this is a hard recommendation for me because I truly um, don't believe this is the be- the best use of space for the fire department. Or progressing the city forward in their fire protection. But based on the thirty nine year relationship with Pistorresi, you know, the recommendation is to adopt a resolution approving a three month extension to the original lease agreement with Pistorresi beginning on January first of twenty twenty two for a monthly rate of two thousand forty dollars. Uh, and all similar to, an alternative, as an alternative, council may rather direct staff to allow Pistorresi to continue to use the station at a monthly lease rate of one thousand twenty or may direct staff to enter into a longer term agreement. Uh, one thousand twenty is the current rental agreement with the city in Pistorresi. Uh, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions?
Uh, so I guess, I don't know if this is necessarily for you, uh, chief, uh, Mr. Mr. Piss Rashi right here. Um, so what is the plan? Um, because this is the second extension, because we've had this discussion a few times. I don't know if you want to come. Sounds like this is a, no matter what, it's kind of difficult decision and di- difficult situation, but what is the plan?
Yeah, um, so this is the first, you know, request for an extension. This was uh, granted in, in June of this, this year. So, it's obvious that the fire department needs the space. Um, it's, it's been a wonderful arrangement. I, I can't even express how important that location is to the west side of Madera. Um, it's just an integral part of, you know, fast, rapid response times. So it's crucial that we stay in that area as close to that area as we can. I can assure you that since June, I have not been doing nothing. We have looked and looked and looked. Um, we met with the um, city administrator last week. I had a little portfolio of all the people that I've talked to and places and phone, phone conversations. And so I've gone, you know, quite thoroughly through the area trying to find a space. So we are just asking for three more months. I'm not gonna ask for another extension. Um, I'm hoping that we can find something. Uh, we had originally talked to Berry Construction and Berry Development about some of the, um, the areas out by, behind the DMV. Initially, it wasn't a big priority for them and we were still had other options we were looking at. Well, now we've re, you know, made connections with them again. And so they are putting together a plan to try to see if they could do something with us and put us at one of the far ends of these, um, um, the warehouses out there and then configure, because we need bedrooms, full bathroom, kitchen, shower and that sort of thing. So, so we are hoping that that will, will work out and, um, you know, I'm thankful to, to the city and, and to the, the, the the agreement that we've had over all these years. I think it's been a good thing for the community and for the healthcare. And um, I just, I just really hope that we can find something and get out and so that we don't have to, well, I won't extend it again. So that's, that's what we're doing. And then, of course, we did talk to the De Silvas and they assured us that, you know, the fire engines can stay there in the car barn for three more months. Um, there's not a problem with that at all. So we tried to help out with that.
Okay. Okay.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Protem. Thank you, Mr. Mr. Ressi for coming in and, and giving us that information that we so needed. Um, I just want to put it on record that I've worked really close with the Historical Society with the chief and um, Assistant Chief Garcia trying to get those engines back to the city where they belong. And in that agreement, it was that we were to take them on January first. Uh, again, it was out of our control that this is happening. So I just wanted to make it on record that it's not that we don't want them. This is important to have Pistorresis near the west side. So I thank the Silva family for um, keeping them for us safe for another three months and that we will take possession of them then.
I just would like to know how far out that would be and how would that affect residents on the east side?
I'm sorry, how far out?
Yeah, um, you had mentioned that you were contemplating, um, other spaces, very.
Yeah, um, well, do you know where the DMV is over here? Just behind, let's say a half a block, a block behind them, there's four long warehouses there. So there's railroad track, there's DMV, the railroad tracks, State Mart Center, down Howard Road. So it's probably as a crow flies. You know what, a mile, two miles from, from the station now. Um, and we're still on the west side. Obviously, if I was across railroad tracks and, you know, towards the park and that area, that would be obviously the best, but it's still it's still a, a better location. I mean, there's other people that have contacted us. Oh, we got places on Cleveland and, you know, other places. And we've already got ambulances. We got one at this station. There's one out by the, um, the county jail, which would be kind of southeast. We got one at road twenty six and Avenue seventeen, which would be north, northeast. Um, this place and then right by the Catholic church. So we kind of triangulated and one in the middle. If we take off the left triangle, this, this station, and we're not there, then that, that's a big area, you know, that, that may have slower response time. So we're, it's a, it's a very, very important that we stay in that area.
All right. Anyone else? Mr. Rodriguez?
Uh, yes, um, and thank you again, Chief, for your presentation. And thank you, Mr. Piss Ressi, for um, letting us know and keeping us apprised of what's taking place. I know that the market certainly hasn't been as favorable. Especially for single family units. I'm not sure if that's your ideal. Um, if that's what you're looking for, I'm not sure if that industrial space that you're seeking is the, the ideal place to, uh, uh, station your, your service. I know that in other areas such as seventeen and twenty six, you do have a, a home out there and I think that works good for that area. But I, I would also concur with the councilwoman, Diego's, that the service is super important, especially in the west side and that we, we, we certainly consider that when we make this decision. Uh, so Hilda, maybe for you, this being an extension that doesn't have an extension, correct? Or, or does it have any other provisions? This would have to come back to the council if, if that did occur again. I know you're telling me that you're not going to extend, which is great. I think, uh, based on the circumstances that's been expressed here, that space is, is needed. And I, I think, uh, um, uh, with that, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to move forward on the extension, uh, given that, uh, you've come before us and, and you're, you're situating that, that, uh, that space for, for your service. Certainly recognize that it's very important that we stay within that area. But Hilda, back to you, um, that this current agreement here, I'm assuming is just for a three month extension, right?
The, the amendment before you is a basic three month extension with the increased rent.
Okay. So, uh, with that, I'm, I'm prepared to move forward on that. I know that there may be other questions or maybe public comments, but uh, uh, I'm certainly in favor of that.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. Thank you. Alicia, do we have any public comment?
We do have one other.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Please forgive me. Um, councilman?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to say, uh, yeah, we can move forward to extend that three months, uh, agreement to state, to Mr. Piss Ressi to state in the fire department fifty seven and uh, also I agree with the increase of the to two thousand and forty for months, for the next, next three months. So, and then after that, if he's, uh, gonna be okay, then find another place. So I would, I would like to move forward and comply with this. Thank you.
So I motion to approve D four with a three month extension and increase rate that's presented here.
Second.
All in favor? Alrighty. Thank you very much, sir. Any other public comments, anything? Anyone has anything to say?
I have no written public comment. Mark, do we have any callers?
And no callers on Zoom.
Okay, we're moving on to administrative reports and will that be from our illustrious city manager?
Excuse me, Mayor Protem. I believe we have one more item.
E one, E one. And that is.
Seek direction regarding twenty twenty two.
E one. Oh, I'm so sorry. Yeah, that's this administrative report, so E one. Okay, um, seek direction, um, regarding the twenty twenty two regular city council meeting schedules.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. The item before you this evening is, uh, as indicated on the agenda calendar, is, is to discuss next year's uh, city council calendar. Uh, generally, as councils aware, uh, the city council historically has met the first and third Wednesdays of the month. At the same time, council serving as the housing authority board meets the second Wednesday of the month. So with that being said, the council, for the first three Wednesdays of every month, the council has meetings. Plus you have special meetings, plus you sit on other boards and commissions. The council has its plate full. Uh, the, the purpose of this item is to plan for next year. Um, and, and at the same time, there, there are holidays that come up. There are other meetings, there's trainings. And we simply want to be considerate of council and at the same time staff, so everyone can plan accordingly. At the same time, there, there are times where, uh, city staff, myself specifically, will approach council and say, we need a special meeting. Uh, we try to minimize those. However, there are some items that, that require, uh, their own meetings because of their nature, their time consuming. Um, or, or because we have urgent matters. With that being said, we often have a special meeting around May for the budget and sometimes in April for the capital improvement program. Those items are not in the calendar that I'll be sharing. With that being said, again, we did take into consideration a couple of key things. One were holidays. Also, the League of California trainings, we want to make sure that council has an opportunity to attend a training without missing a council meeting. And at the same time, we do have an election coming up next year. The reason we say that is because we generally have, uh, meetings on the first Wednesday. The election's on the first Tuesday of November. Makes it very difficult to attend a meeting the next night. We understand they take a tremendous amount of effort and people are exhausted. So with that being said, thi- this is the calendar that staff is proposing. And I will highlight that there are three, uh, three dates that are highlighted in red with the red border. So in January, um, I'll, I'm just gonna go month by month. To January, we, we highlighted in red that, that's a meeting date that staff would recommend that we counsel. With that being said, though, based on, uh, this evening's meeting, uh, depending how the information comes out, we, we would ask that everyone remain flexible for that day. We also identified in somewhat of a light blue slash purple League of California holidays. The yellow dates would be city council dates, knowing that the third Wednesday of the month, I'm sorry, the second Wednesday of every month, council has housing authority. So, uh, February, March, April, May, June, July, August, no changes. Moving fast forward to September, September the seventh is a regularly scheduled council meeting day. With that being said, the League of California Cities will be having their annual conference on the seventh and the ninth. This council note, that's, that's a little bit earlier than the past couple of years.
Yes.
A couple, two years ago, it was in late October, if memory serves me. This previous year, it was, it was in October, no, late September. Yeah, thank you. And, and in October, no changes. November, uh, staff would recommend that we do not have the meeting on November the second. Again, there's an election the night before. And then, um, on December, we are highlighting the holiday closure. The holiday closure is, 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 uh, is in, uh, the MOU with labor groups and the city, uh, closes during that time. Um, we've also identified with the crosshatch holidays. The one challenge in the past that we've had is historically, we have attempted to, um, to allow time during spring break and the first day of school, because we understand that a lot of people have families, council and community members alike. The one challenge is the school district has not yet put out its calendar. So we were trying to guesstimate when spring break is and when school goes back. But that's a little bit challenging because we're, um, we just didn't quite know. So for the time being, we just left them. So, so with that, I do want to turn it back over to council for discussion and for direction. Um, and, and again, my only ask here, the only change would be if council and staff can keep their calendars open on January the fifth. And that's all assuming that we have additional information that we feel confident that we can share.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mayor Protem. My question on all those is, I'm just looking at the calendar when you said January fifth to the consultants. And this is the first year we've given our directors the holiday closure. I think we're putting a lot of pressure on our staff to try to, and our consultants, because we came up with a lot of questions and that's without us even looking at the documents. Once we get them to kind of digest them with more questions to send to you. Um, for me, I think that's cutting it stressful and you want people to enjoy this time of year. And they're finally getting the opportunity to do that. So I would say the fifth, to me, would not be a day we'd want to have, that would want to meet.
Compared enough, council member, you're a lot nicer than I am. I was gonna have everyone work through the holidays.
Now, if they were working, it would have been a different story.
Are you suggesting the third? January third? Is that what you were suggesting?
No, I would say not that week. Kelsey Rodriguez.
Children, children.
I'm, I'm sorry, would it then?
I, I would say we could do it on the twelfth. The housing isn't real. I don't think we have a lot of meat on that meeting. That it could have maybe happened on the twelfth. We're already all here.
Discussion?
I just.
Hilda? I'm not available on the twelfth. Okay.
Yeah, so, um, for the meantime, if absolutely necessary, we will touch base with our city, uh, with our city attorney and maybe the twelfth, but if not, uh, January the nineteenth is probably appropriate.
Okay.
And so I definitely don't want to muddy the waters. It, it, it's not, um, I mean, i- it's, it's, it's time sensitive, but it's not an emergency at the same time.
And, and, uh, we can always send the information, the documents, because definitely they'll be ready the week before the nineteenth. So you have at least a week to review them.
Absolutely.
Mr. Viegas?
Uh, yeah, I just want to let you know, uh, to the council and everybody there. I'm leaving on the fifth. I come back on the fourteenth. I'm leaving to Mexico, so I will not be here. I'll be ready up to the fourteenth.
Okay.
I'll be back on the fourteenth, but it's, it's, um, Friday, so. But after that, I'll be ready though. I'll be here again.
Okay, Mr. Rodriguez?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to confirm. So we, we did, we are scheduling for the twelfth. Did I hear that correctly?
No.
Uh, I know who's gonna check with legal counsel.
No, Hilda's not gonna be here. I would like to, uh, be present for the twelfth because it's a, you're making big decisions and I'd like to be part of it.
It wouldn't be a decision. It would just be information on our decisions on the nineteenth.
But a lot of, there'll be a lot of direction and a lot of analysis and right, so it's my request, but I work with the city manager to see if something else can, if, if that can come up.
So, I'm sorry, and was there a direction to have one on the twelfth? Did I hear that correctly or not?
They're gonna work it out and let us know.
Okay, so that we can still get that back. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, special meetings don't have to be.
Yeah, I mean, special meetings don't have to be on a Wednesday. That's right, correct. So you can, and if we do need one, we can have one that anytime it's convenient. Or that's everybody's available.
Absolutely.
Okay, so we move to for a motion for the nineteenth then?
We don't have to motion. I think it's just direction.
We need direction now.
Just direction.
It would be to, it sounds like you went to approve the schedule before you.
Okay.
The dates off and then uh the city manager in my office will work with uh when we can give you uh more information on the rate studies.
Right, okay, okay. So it's just direction. Thumbs up? Okay, there we go. Now. We are. We are finished. Council member reports, announcements, future agenda items. All right, let's start with. Oh, right, Councilwoman Gago. Um, I was gonna bring to our attention, but I think she's gone. We had a grants admin here. That we is new, but she's gone now. So we didn't get to say hello to her. So if we can put that on the next. Um, that'd be nice. Um, the next thing I have was. I would like to, if my colleagues are um, would like to entertain that idea, I'm taking to heart what our resident said when they called. And um, I've been to vote for events in the last month and have gotten approached by many citizens. That are asking questions that I don't have answers for. And um, those questions are, what can we do um as residents? Or is it a council decision? Uh, do the voters have a say on making um a change in our mayorship? They were talking about making it a rotating mayor like we used to have in the past. Um, or like the resident said today, um, a two-year mayor. Uh, our Congress and Senate is also a two-year, so. Um, they would be on like their rotation. I would like staff to get information um and legal counsel to come back with. Something that I could take to the public. Um, if that's something that my colleagues would would like information on. Montez? You have something to say?
That's, we give direction on on that.
Direction on that.
Yeah, so I think I think we should, you know, listen to what the community says and just get the information.
I can just prepare a memo and send it to council and then it'll be a public memo. And then if council, after receiving it, decides that it wants to put something on an agenda, it can do that.
Well, I'd like to put it on the agenda because we've had, I've had several residents with concerns and now we had a caller. And if we get a memo, then they're still not hearing and what the outcome of it is. So the direction would be to to have it put on that place on the agenda? Yes. Okay.
Yeah, and I think that's why the green light.
That's what, that's how we do the thumbs up.
She's new. Give me a break. Okay, thank you very much.
So point of clarification can just to be absolutely cer- certain, at the at the next council meeting. Uh, uh, legal counsel will will prepare uh additional information. It'll be an agendized item. To to place on the agenda for council discussion about how uh either rotating mayor or two-year mayor cycles. And is is that the consensus of of council? I I'm sorry, I missed the thumbs up.
Well, it's usually lights.
Well, I'm I'm sorry. Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, Ms. Mahia?
Um, I would just like to remind everybody about the event on Monday from um twelve to two. Uh, the Madera Coalition and they're still seeking donations.
Yes, okay, thank you very much. Mr. Montez?
Uh, I just wanna say, thank you for everything staff does. It's been feel like a really long year. Uh, Merry Christmas. Won't see you guys again till the next year, not on the fifth. Um, probably not on the twelfth, but uh, no, thank you and everybody be safe and uh, I know we have to. COVID is, seems like it's starting to make a comeback, but um, I never actually do in a way, but everybody be safe out there and have a Merry Christmas. Didn't happen here.
Okay, Mr. Rodriguez?
Uh, yes, thank you, uh, Mayor Protem. I wanted to uh recognize that uh. We had a ribbon cutting in. I forgot to uh mention the 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 people that were there, but uh, this happened. Um, back in November and Warehouse Partners, um, uh, obviously is gonna start um. Development of uh um bringing in what we call industrial multi-unit uh, uh, which is a huge need for our community. Especially for small businesses. In attendance, uh, was Mayor Protem Evans, uh, myself. Uh, our mayor Garcia and again, uh, council member Artemio Villegas, but uh certainly uh uh. Welcoming uh Mr. Boys and and Ms. Bolt uh with Warehouse Partners. I think this partnership certainly um allows us to, again, access this land to uh bring in our smaller businesses. That that wanna have that smaller space to get started. I I used a reference of of Bill Gates, obviously, when he started his business in his garage. And now you mean you look at this, but when you provide opportunity for businesses such as that, I mean, we can certainly grow. Um, no no different than any other uh bigger business. I think they have to start somewhere. And why not look at Madera? So I really appreciate the fact that we had that opportunity um to to have that ribbon cutting that's that soon to come. Uh, and hopefully when that development is there, all of us can be there in the presence of what this uh project looks like. Um, second, I I I'd wanted just to comment also on the uh, the public comment that was made regarding. Uh, uh, not s- uh, not not so much towards the mayor, but I I would like to see that uh. Our our council continue to request that we have governance training. I think it's certain important. I've I've been a big advocate of that and I think. With that, it kind of shows us to govern ourselves around not only in council, but also among our constituency and among our community. Uh, I feel that that's always an important uh uh, an important role for us is to continue to get educated, trained. So that we make good decisions and we're always visible and transparent amongst our community. So Hilda, I'm not sure if that's something that's scheduled for us, but I I know that we have a new member in our um, in our council chambers. Uh, alongside uh, along other uh newer uh council members. I think it would be. A very prudent approach for us to to take that uh governance trainings and and bylaws and revisit that at least once a year. So that we continue to get that training. So that those are my comments. Um, I do wanna wish everyone here on the screen in Zoom. Everyone out there in the public, a very happy holidays. Uh, wishing you all are safe and happy and and most importantly, healthy, especially now with the uh. With the uh, the mask ordinance now in play, I think we we're gonna see some numbers increase, so I hope that everybody stays healthy throughout the holidays. So thank you again, uh, Mayor Proten.
Thank you very much. Mr. Villegas?
Uh, thank you, Anita Evan, Mayor Proten. Uh, we have a bike giveaway on Saturday. And the Ford dealer, so uh spread the boys for the little kids and girls. We have a lot of bikes that they're ready for. Also, next week on Tuesday, December twenty first. We have the clothes and food giveaway on the Islamic temple on north. Uh, twenty-six. So we have those two events coming up too. Very important to give a to the community, so everybody's invited to participate. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I would like to just say, thank you all for just. Being here, for being you, for this city, for the love that we all have here in Madera. There's obstacles that occur. But if we just put our hearts out there first and we start acknowledging the things that are occurring in our city. And just be thankful for what we have, because look at what happened with the tornadoes. The hurricanes, you know, there are people now that are displaced from their homes and. We need to just pray for each other. We need to come together as a city, you know? Um, I'm asking for prayer for those those cities back east. I wanna say thank you to um Mid Valley for the the luncheon that we went to. It was very nice. There was a lot of things that were discussed and and it was a fellowship that was there as well. But I love this city and and I I truly appreciate the staff here, my colleagues here. The chief standing back there, thank you very much. For our public. I pray that we all can come together as one, you know? And with that, I say Merry Christmas to everyone. If I don't see you, Happy New Year and God bless you. You wanna take us on out?
Thank you, uh, Mayor Protem and council. You have three items, uh, hopefully very short. Uh, G one, conference with labor negotiators, government code five four nine five seven point six, agency designated. Representatives Arnoldo Rodriguez and Wendy Selva Employee Groups, general bargaining, Madera POA mid-management. And law enforcement mid-management. Uh, G two, conference with legal counsel, government code five four nine five six point ninety-two. Workers' compensation claim, Christian Gomez uh and Mark Atoke. So there's two claims there. And three liability claim under government code five four nine five six point ninety-five. Agency claimed against City of Madera, claimant Darrell Dark Rustikian Attorney on behalf of Selvia Parrientos.
Okay, the city council met in closed session. Mayor Garcia was absent. Councilmember Mejia recouped herself from item G three and there is no reportable action on any of the items.
One last thing, Mary Purtem. I'd like to thank our wastewater treatment plant and our police officers and our fire personnel for working on that one week closure. The rest of our staff will be off on and they're going to be out there diligently doing their jobs. So thank you.
Thank you very much everyone. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year and we will see you next year. Goodbye, God bless and we're out.